Well, in my, sorry.
You know how much trouble some of these families have in the county.
I mean, I know it's just another family hour, but that's huge for something.
I don't know that I could get to the court house. I mean, I could. You know, if I had trouble with it.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
It's just a good service to.
Yeah. I feel like, I don't know.
This is a special board meeting for the Rockcastle County Board of Education because we are in a new location tonight. We want to welcome any guests that are here. We want to thank you, Mr. Owens, for, I'm assuming that you're here to babysit us, aren't you?
We probably need one.
But thank you very much. But we'd like to welcome everybody. Mr. Bustle, we can't wait to hear from you. I always hear good things about Broadhead Elementary, so I'm excited to hear it. But on our agenda, let it be noted that because this is a special board meeting, nothing can really be changed because of that, okay? So first things, call the meeting to order and with silent prayer. Let the roll call note that Ms. Misty cannot be here tonight. Item one sees the reading of board team commitments, and I have it here in front of me, so I'll just go ahead and read it for us. The board team commitments for Rockcastle County Schools. To improve our effectiveness, the board team for Rockcastle County Schools commits to: Review processes and experiences to identify and direct improvements. Continuously define and work toward long-term goals which serve all students of the district. Make each decision based on facts and the best for all students. Listen to each other and speak freely. Work together, support each other, and not surprise one another. Discuss board deliberations to point of mutually agreeable resolution based on factual information. Support the majority's decision projecting board unity toward shared goals for continuously improving district-wide student learning. Operate without personal or political agendas. Respect one another. Agree to disagree respectfully. Delegate implementation to superintendent and education team and to respectfully remind each other of these commitments. Item two is adopt the agenda. Pretty much can't change anything, so might as well adopt it, huh?
Make a motion.
Motion. Larry?
I would just like to say that when we get to Operation Action, I'd like some information along some of these, but yes.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. First and second, all in favor?
Yes.
Okay. Item three is our school and community showcase, Mr. Bustle.
All right. I just, we have a lot kind of going on at this time of year. We started testing today. Unfortunately, we haven't got our students a whole lot together. We're still at Broadhead, we're still in cohorts. Our classrooms are, we consider cohorts or family units. So our students aren't mingling, we're not having any practices with, you know, in course or things of that nature. And so I'm sorry that we don't have a student presentation or something. And plus disrespecting your time tonight, I am going to just kind of go over about some things that are going on in Broadhead. And I'll definitely take some questions and try to, and just sure up if you have any questions about Broadhead or maybe the situation that elementaries are facing at this time, I'd be glad to state that. And the first thing I'd love to, or first thing I'd like to say is I do appreciate our administration here, our district office, and the work that they've done. But most importantly, I want to thank our staff at Broadhead Elementary because I can speak for them and I understand the work that they've gone through. It's been unbelievable. It's been unbelievable, and it's a blessing to see the little light at the end of the tunnel. Just with all the different things that we've had thrown at us, the virtual piece, the two days a week, A B schedule, and now back in person and still dealing with some of the virtual pieces and still kind of going through that. The work that our teachers have put in is unmeasurable, unmeasurable. And it's been a very big impact, not only to Broadhead Elementary, but to our community, I mean, to the community of Broadhead. And that's what's a blessing to be the principal of Broadhead Elementary is that we still have that great community. We still have that peace, we still have that fiber, that link. That's why I was talking to Mr. Hammond here before. Seventy-five percent of my students, I know grandparents, I know aunts, uncles, brothers, sisters, went to school with them, known, been around them. So we can relate with them, we can help them, and the support. And the next thing I want to thank is our family resource center. It's been unreal. Ms. Angie King has been unreal in reaching our students. And in talking also outside here before, I, six months ago, I was terrified of the academic decline or the impacts that the virtual learning that COVID-19 has had. And the realistic piece is we've had growth, we've had students, we feel comfortable. Yes, we do have some deficits in our curriculum instruction just from just time constraints and trying to get back and trying to do, just reach the rocks of the fundamental pieces of education. It's very important for our students to be strong readers and strong fluency math students. And so that was always my goal, even before COVID, is I'd talk with my teachers. I'd say any middle school teacher, I promise you, if you can say that they're a fluent reader and they know their math facts, my goodness, I can take them places. And so that's the kind of impacts that we're still trying to make, we're still trying to go back and making sure they have that foundation before we move on. But the sad part of that is I understood there was going to be a social emotional piece. And I understood that our kids are going to have some impacts about being in their environments without having the emotional support of teachers, instructional assistants, counselors, principals, peers. It has been just an unbelievable amount of struggle with some of our students in our classrooms. And I've even had conversations at points that I've never had in my entire career since my sixth year at Broadhead, and I've been at Broadhead for seventeen. But we've got to get some kids right mentally before we can even focus on some of those depths of academics. And it's real, it's real. And that piece has been just something that I didn't see to be such a severity, especially in the little community that we've got, but some of those environments that our students have been in and not having that support to kind of go out. So real quick, we are, we have, we've had a couple of things. Our F R C did muffins with moms last week, last Fridays. We had a drive-through that was like from nine to ten, or we had over sixty participants in that. They got a muffin, they got an activity, they got a writing piece, they did that. We're also having a drive-through, and that's a couple of Fridays from now, it's drive-through with dads. They're going to get a pizza kit, they'll receive a book, an activity to kind of go at home just to have that time with their families and trying to provide some structured activities for families to complete with their children. We are starting our testing this week, will continue today, tomorrow, and Thursday. Our third graders actually will not be tested on Thursday, so that's nice. We're rubbing it in everybody's face with Tiger Pride Week. It just seemed natural not to have, and try to have as little change to our schedule as we can because we've had so much of that, and I'll get on to a little bit of that later. But we just, and then black and orange, Mr. Derrick, as you all know, I wear black and orange trado every day. I do support the Rockets as well, and you know, Mr. Bustle up there and trying to wear the Rockets. So every once in a while, you might catch me in red, white, and blue, but I'm pretty stuck in my ways with the black and orange. So that makes me pleased, that's happy for me to see all of our kiddos wearing the Broadhead shirts and supporting, taking that pride and having that pride in our school, that's important to me. Also, our, Ms. Angie King has been working with our kindergarten teachers. We have a kindergarten readiness bag that we, and I'll leave this here tonight so you all can look through it. Basically, it's just got a lot of, some flash cards, it's got some activities that's going to go in. I actually didn't get the pamphlet that was going to go in, I grabbed the top sheet and I didn't, I forgot to grab the bottom part. But there's just a lot of activities, just trying to get them kindergarten readiness, walking them through letters, sounds, walking them through numbers, trying to give a head start for our kindergartners coming next year. And a blessing for our five-year-olds and some six-year-olds is that when they walk in our doors next year, it's going to be a normal year for them. So our kindergarten classrooms will have that normalcy. And so hopefully with this and the registration, the kindergarten registration, having that this year is our first time. Starting Friday, we're going to start screening our kindergartners, we'll know who's coming. That was always a big hiccup in August when you had, you might know about forty kindergarten students that we'd have at Broadhead, and all of a sudden you have twenty-five that night. They're coming, they're enrolling that night, and maybe two nights, two days later, they're in our building. And so at least our, with this, we're helping getting our kindergarten teachers are going to be the screeners. They're going to go through the dial four with our students, they're going to be able to meet them, kind of go through that. And looking through July, we haven't had a set date yet, we don't know if we'll do it in July or August. We definitely want to have a kindergarten camp, kinder camp, so that those students can come in, walk through, we can take them out, maybe even add, you know, have a simulation with the bus, come in through the doors, have a simulation where they'll be dropped off. So they'll get that part and be able to walk to class, try to take some of that tension off and go with that. And we're also looking to have maybe our orientations to be where we have our roster set, our students can come in and spend a little bit more time with our teachers, get some formative assessment on them. That way we can start trying to have some groups, some things day one. You know, where in the past, we might have, we might have got, get to know you for those first couple of weeks, that three weeks. And we would really like to have day one numbers to say, all right, we're going to start. And so just, well, let me get the, we're going to have our three weeks of summer school, and that's all, we do have that planned right now. So we're doing it Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursdays. And we have invited about a hundred and twenty-five, so that's over, we had a targeted audience. And if any student who was targeted, if they had a sibling at Broadhead Elementary, we also invited them. So we have about a hundred and twenty-five, which is over a quarter of our population that we have actually targeted to come in. It may be academic, but also we've taken into consideration some of those social emotional, maybe some issues that they're having in the classroom. We're trying to get them in the Broadhead and trying to give them some positive experiences. And also it'll be just a little bit smaller, we're going to try to stay below ten to one with our teacher-to-student ratio during that time. And I was talking with Mr. Brandon today, we're going to try to eliminate as much computer screen time as we possibly can during that time. But if it's an I-ready, if it's an educational piece that we can take that twenty minutes and even condense some of our, and make that ten to one, five to one for meaningful moments, I think that would be a big benefit for us. And we'll also provide activities, our family resource. She had been planning the last couple of years, we were going to have a camp, we had a camp three years ago. But we dissected sharks and we had fun STEM activities. So we are going to continue to have our camp, but it's going to be a camp in the bag unfortunately for the STEM package just because it's so important right now to continue with our students who need those additional gains at this time. And so looking forward next year, I just think that our school has really struggled and Derek Bustle has struggled mightily with the lack of structure. And it has been, it's been devastating to me. And I don't know about our school climate, we're still surviving, we're making progress, we're doing things. I just want to make sure, and I have talked with my staff briefly about, I want to make sure that we are structuring ourselves to provide structures not only for ourselves, but for our students. I think during this time, that's something that we've all lost, the routine, the A B schedule. Students were in one day, off a day, in the next day, off three days. And so that routine, that structure, that every day no one was coming at you is something that Derek Bustle is going to focus on at Broadhead Elementary. And that's something that I feel like is very impactful, that's a way that I find relief in my life. That's why I talk, when I talk to students, I say every Sunday night, I'm prepared to go Monday morning. I don't have to go running looking for a shoe or sock, I lay it out on Sunday night so that my Mondays all start well. And so just trying to rub off some of those, some of that routine, trying to set that structure, bedtimes, you know, screen times. And we can control that now with being able to monitor our internet use on our Chromebooks and be able to do that. So that's basically where we're at, and I'll take some questions and I'll think of some other things if you all are very interested in knowing.
What is your enrollment number at Broadhead?
I think we're like four thirty-seven, four hundred and thirty-seven currently, I think, is what our last numbers, I think Mr. Ripper's there at the strategic plan meeting. I think that's what we're rolling at. And we had about thirty-five, forty, thirty-five preschool students. So yeah, we are, we've got a big, I mean, that's a lot for Broadhead.
Well, I guess one of my questions I'd have, you talked about the kindergarten camp thing that you, you know, signing them up early, I think that's great. Since you've been where you've been for as long as you've been there, you're, I know you see a big difference with all-day kindergarten.
Oh, yes, yeah. That's a, it's a very big impact on the next step. We've got, we've got kindergartners now who can read at the end of kindergarten. And whereas that was not, that was not the case years ago. You were just pretty much focusing on sounds and maybe even some blends. But now we have some kids that are going into first grade who are, who are readers. And so that's impactful because then those are peers that said, that are displaying the correct ways of reading, they're showcasing that. Lots of thoughts here, what is that called? If you're reading and.
Mom life.
Yeah, it's good models. I mean, it's great models, you know, and being able to set that and just hearing that fluency and hearing how they call words. And so that's impactful for your first grade because you've got those models in there, and that increases your first grade. So yes, all-day kindergarten is a must. And if you really want to know, I'd love to have all-day preschool. We probably have to structure it in a little different way, but just because they do get a little tired at the end of the days and we'd have to structure their ways. But as much as I can have kids at Broadhead Elementary, I'm all for it, I'm all for it.
How many kindergarten classes do you have?
I have, this year we have four. We had a class of eighty-five. And generally at Broadhead, we have sixty-five would be like our normal number, our average, and we had eighty-five this year. So we had a major impulse on that. And so, and that grade will probably have to follow. So we have three teachers in each grade except kindergarten. But at this time and point, that it's looking like we'll have to follow that class with an additional teacher.
And with that class, the basis for that, did it just happen to be the winter of the year that they were born?
That's what I thought too. What happened, what happened five years ago, what happened around Rockcastle, they got all these students there. But yeah, it was, it was, it just, they just kept coming. And we were in the situation last year too, where we were in the COVID time, we had no idea that we were going to end up with eighty-five. I mean, we had sixty, sixty-seven, I think, or something, you know, in there, and we were like, all right, we're just going to get a few extras. So we'll be seventy-two, seventy-three, eighty-five. And then we've, we've, we've lost a few students to moving and things, I think we're down like to eighty right now. But, and we're going to have a few retention, but for the most part, it would be a normal, a normal retention year. Just, so we'll have that class will probably be about seventy-five to eighty all the way through.
I appreciate what you said in regards to all-day kindergarten. And there's no doubt, and probably both, well, maybe not most, but it is great that legislature saw it, could at least one year pay for that.
Yes.
After many years of districts picking that up, and I know Rockcastle was one of the one, one of the world's last to do that. But that does make a big difference, and your brother will appreciate that in about, oh, whatever, eight or nine years.
Yes, sir, he would.
Your view too on the social aspect, I think it matches what we see, what we read in the news, what you hear from your peers elsewhere. If there's some funding needs to be channeled, maybe there's a shortage of those service providers that might be able to assist us with that. But I know there's something on the agenda there to sort of address that tonight, and there's no doubt that that's crucial.
It is, it is.
For the adults, uh, Mr. Bustle, I talked about the impact long-term with the results of them, because businesses are now sending, uh, people home, and in urban settings, and even in rural settings. What will that do? You know, what will that do to our, uh, interpersonal, uh, relationships? And what will that do to our communication skills when the parents are home screen all the time at home? And kids are there, and, uh, kids have device, uh, be a different group of, uh, folks in society out there in ten years, more than likely. But it sounds great.
Thank you. And, yeah, just the impacts it's made on students in the last nine months. I mean, it's the, whenever I meet with students now, you know, you would generally deal with just your ordinary, everyday elementary issues. You know, friends and having troubles and, and struggling with things at home. But now those sit, it's situations when I sit down with a student, they are just a little bit more what I call red-eared. You know, those are the new things that you hear or do, and you, when you, when you work in this line, sometimes you get, you hear some of those stories and you know how to help kids, and you've been there, and you, and you've guided them through, and you've seen successes. And now there's, those situations just seem like they have grown some, and, and it's taken a lot more support outside of Derrick Bustle, Ms. Janice, my counselor, Ms. Angie, uh, my office staff, my teachers, and just making them aware of the situations and helping this with, with that. So it's taken a whole lot more of, of a unified front than ever before, just with dealing with that social, emotional piece. And, and not having that interaction with peers and teachers and, and others, and, and trying to get out of that and having that screen time. Sir.
Mr. Bustle, I, I have another question.
Absolutely.
And, you know, everybody talks about these S R funds, okay? And, uh, I guess my curi- curiosity in me, I, I know you have needs at Broadhead. Uh, what, what do you feel like is your greatest need?
Right now, would be, would definitely be some social, emotional support. Um, and just, and just having some additional hands to come in and to help me when, whenever some things grow larger than Derrick Bustle. Um, and, and making sure that we have those people that can, that can get them to the resources that they need and deserve. Um, you know, generally in the past, we would have very few of these, or, you know, handful of these situations, and it was easier for us to be able to manage that and go through with it. Just like with Ms. Angie Payne, uh, I talked with Ms. Ripper today. Um, it's just been a big support just for her to come in and to be able to help lift off some of the, some of that groundwork off of, off of my, me in my office, to be able to make sure that we're serving our families and we're getting them to the right resources. And, and she's able to counsel the, those students as well. So we've had that additional help, and that's come up in this, this past year, and she's been a big piece of that. And so I think that that, that extra piece and the counseling piece would be great. And also finding things for our students to be able to get into. And I, and I think we tried, talked about this at one of our meetings. At, at Broadhead, if, if you don't play basketball, if you don't play down Little League football, if you don't have just, you know, we've got karate in town, we've got some other things. We just don't have a whole lot of outlets for our students to get to. And, and, and right now, Broadhead, uh, we're, we're, we're providing the best that we can. And so if we could get some additional supports for students to be able to get there and be around that, and, and having something that's, that's drawing them in, that's guiding them, making, or preparing them for their futures, but also at the same time, having some positive impacts, having some, you know, having some people around that are rubbing off on us, as, as, as we've all had educators, as we've all had support people throughout our lives or activities. Just getting a little bit of them off on some of our students would be a major piece. And, and just providing them with something that's important to them, that they see through, and that they get that just additional support. And so if we could provide some activities after school, we've got a great school, we've got a great environment. Um, we've got things that are there. I just wish that, you know, we also need some help just keeping kids involved and having that outlet, having that place to kinda hang out and feel safe, and, and like I said, preparing themselves for things to come in the future.
Do you think that you have less involvement because of COVID, or is it just from a lack of the, that it's available?
Uh, you, I'd say COVID definitely has a big impact on, on involvement. And you're right, there's, there's availability, people have got busy schedules. And so that structure and routine would definitely help out if we could keep a definite routine and structure for them, and having a place that they can stay after school, and there's only one pickup there, rather than having to go home, come back. I think, you know, in today's world, I mean, our, our families are busy. There's a lot of opportunity, there's a lot of things to do. And, you know, it's, it's, it gets a little bit out of whack on us sometimes. But if we could provide that, and, and even with targeted, starting out with targeted groups that we are focusing on and trying to make sure that we're making those programs available for those students, you know, and then, and, and if we can grow from there, then that'll be great. But I, I definitely feel that there's, if we could, if we could try to involve our students more, even if it's focused in ag, and we try to, you know, improve our students to, as they're in elementary school, have that little absorption of information to grow on, or if it's in, uh, coding, or, you know, just activities that are such that, are preparing them, providing them with some skills, and even showing them, hey, you may like this kinda thing. So that's gonna be something that you wanna, that you wanna go after once you're in high school.
You were talking about the retention, and I'm sure you were talking about for kindergarten. What do you see your retention for, um, your title school?
Um, it, it's really, uh, like I said, academically, we, we're definitely, we've definitely taken some hits. Um, we've definitely taken some curri- curriculum. We haven't gotten to all the standards, not as in-depth as we, we would like to. And there's no doubt about that. And there's, um, but, as far as students are on, just on simple measures, as fluency, reading fluency, comprehension, some quick things, we're not as, we don't have a big as deficit as I, that I would predicted six months ago.
That's awesome.
I mean, right, and it is. Uh, math fluency is something that we really focused on, because that's, that's a, that's a hard subject for people to get at home.
That's a need for the entire district.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just a hard piece. So we, we do have, we, we can plan ahead next year. We can structure ourselves to have some small groups and doing that. But, but we do have probably an elevated, um, no, we're a little bit elevated probably kindergarten and first. We don't, we don't have as many. We have some students who don't know their letters and don't know all their numbers. And so we definitely don't want them to go bumping their head in first grade. And if we can work with the family and we can get them, we're obviously gonna provide them with summer school. We're gonna try to provide them with every opportunity to get to that point. But we definitely don't wanna put them in a spot to fail. And, and, but comparatively, for most years, we're right there. We're right there. And, um, at like the third grade level, we, we are, we're less. We're less than we would have been three years ago. And because that's your catch-all primary, exiting primary, making sure you have a good sound reader. And, and that's an easy recommendation for a parent too, is to say, third grade, heck, it's a, it's a great grade, because it's, it's so broad. You're learning how to, reading to learn, and you're working on multiplication, and you're starting to start your fractions. Those are some big-time benchmark skills that if you can reinforce, even if you're a good student and you stay in third grade, you know, you're gonna become a stronger student for the fall. And so usually that would be our catch-all to, to exit primary, and we're, we're less this year than we would have been three years ago. And so overall, our retention is not anywhere out of this world.
I kinda figured that kindergarten and first grade would kinda be hit hard.
Yeah.
That would be a really tough age, you know, on a computer.
It's, it's a really hard, and it's, it's just hard for anybody to teach your child to read. I mean, it, it takes, it takes a special person.
Most definitely, most definitely.
Person to be able to teach a child to read.
Most definitely.
And, uh, and those, and, and that, those first grade teachers and kindergarten teachers are, you know, as, as important as anybody else in our building, but it does take a very, very special person to teach a child to read. And, and that's, and that's something that's a misconception to think, oh, well, yeah, I can just work with these, we can just read through this book. Their skills and strategies, and, I mean, just all kinds of depth there. And, and understanding your sounds and how, how words go together, and we could talk about reading for all night, but, you know, that, you're right. That would have, we really think that, or really thought that first grade and kindergarten would be our biggest, and that is, that's where we're, that's where our biggest hits are.
So you, oh, I'm sorry.
I'll, I'll just follow up with that.
I don't know, you go ahead, Larry.
With, um, with that, go a little bit further with, uh, I know that that is a challenge, it wouldn't be a challenge. What do you, what do you think about virtual support that you got with the parents during that time? I mean, you've already said, and, and we know that, that it takes a special person. It takes a trained person to teach somebody to read, unless you're gifted. I mean, you know, some people can learn from sight words than years ago, but that's okay. What about the support virtual?
Well, and, uh, this is just how I feel from all, all, everything that we've experienced. You know, you can, you can put a pretty decent video out there and teach a concept to a third grader. You can teach a concept to a fourth grader instructionally. You can teach it, you can work through it, and, and then you can put a third, fourth grader, a ten, ten-year-old, nine-year-old up there, and they'd be able, they, they'll be able to comprehend, be able to follow that, being able to reproduce that. You could put a fantastic reading lesson for a first grader, and if there's not somebody there to support them, they're not walking away with, with the maximum they would in the classroom, with that practice, that scope and sequence, that rotating of the groups, hearing those models, hearing those things, hearing that constant literacy all day long, every day. And so that, that virtual piece there, you definitely have to have, in kindergarten, first, and I would even throw second grade in there. You have to have somebody there to really support, continue that practice, and not just allow that one video for a five, six, seven-year-old child to think that they're gonna comprehend the skills. And, and like I said, a teacher could teach the very same lesson, the very same way in the classroom, but it's that practice, it's that, it's that, you know, the variations of levels, and, and reaching students where they're at in that kindergarten, first, and second grade, that makes a teacher great. And so if, if you're not, if you're not versed with that, it's gonna be very challenging for you, and it's gonna be very challenging for your child. And as we've all, I, I, I've never experienced doing homework with my children, but I've heard a lot of stories about it. And it, it just becomes frustrating, and once that, once there's the banging of the heads there, it's, it's just a real different environment to be able to, to, to teach your students at home. And it's just, it's, there's just a different complexity than dealing with your parents than there is with dealing with the teacher. And, and I don't know what that is, but I think that's evident with my conversations with parents and, and my past experiences with students having trouble just, just with homework. And so that's basically, did I tell you?
Oh, yeah, and, and then, I'm, I'll check.
Oh, you're great. I, I like to hear myself talk, by the way.
Especially, especially those that are more challenged. I mean, that, that, that's even multiplying for those.
Absolutely. They had more support. We've had, you know, they, they still continue to have their special educators in the Google meets and the, and the additional support. But yes, they, they missed out quite a bit, just because that, that instruction can't be as direct. It can't be as meaningful, it can't be as person-to-person, you know, and it just, it's just not, it's just not as strong. And there's, there's no denying that. And I don't think that anybody that's been in the position that I've been, been in, or seen kinda what's been going on. Now, I'm sure there's some people high-flying, high-flying with, with their support and special ed, and they've got some tricks of the trade, and, and may have been ahead of the game, and may have already had some things that out there. But I, there's just no way that you can tell me that, that's the virtual support is any, is anywhere close to the in-school, right there with them, small group, or the support during the instructional day.
And you're, and, and you're, you're, we are depending on the instructional assistant being the pan for a guardian. And so, there you go.
Yes, there you go, sir.
Are, uh, the children that you all are, are reaching out to try to go to summer school, uh, would you, would you say that a lot of them have like, is it a I O P individual, I E P, or do, is that?
Uh, that's a, that's a, no, we just, we're, we're really looking for our struggling students. And just the ones that are formatively in the classroom was my biggest thing. I, I've had conversations with teachers from day one about each student, or, you know, that's my, my goal as a principal building principal is to go into your classroom, and I love it when you have all the names on the desk, 'cause I can just simply walk around and say, how's Angela Mink doing? How's Carrie Ballinger doing? How's, you know, how's Mr. Larry Hammond doing? How's, you know, how, how are, just, and just, and that's, that's my roll call, you know, and I go in. And that obviously makes me understand, it makes, it, it focuses my attention on knowing my students. And that's a very important piece to what I do. And, or the person that I wanna be is the principal of Broad Elementary. I wanna know your name, I wanna know the ins and outs of you, because I just think that you deserve that. And so if I go to the teachers and I'm calling them, they also know that when I come in your room, I'm gonna ask you about students, and I'm gonna ask you about what's going on and where you're at. So basically, I just took notes, old-school Derrick Bustle notes on there, wrote down my students. If that name came back up again in February, that's a two-star, that's, that's somebody that we're targeting. We're gonna figure out, they're gonna be meeting, they're gonna accidentally get visited by Mr. Derrick and be like, hey, can I borrow such and such for just a little while? Just to see what's going on, just to check in, just maybe Ms. Janice needs to see him, maybe there's some other pieces that need to happen there. And so if those students are continuously finding their way to my list, trauma list, if they're finding my way to that list, those are the ones I'm gonna target, and then I'm gonna target their siblings as well, just so that transportation, and, and if you're gonna have those students come in, I feel, hey, yep, let's bring in the whole, the whole kit and caboodle. But, but to say that, that we have focused on I E Ps, I mean, not necessarily, it's the general whole population.
You said something about you wear orange and black every day. Is it just during testing or all year long?
I wear it every day.
Oh, if I ever find an orange tie somewhere on sale, I'll come here.
Because there are times, even our school nurse there today says, I, some days I think you wear the very same thing. Black pants, and, wait, that's great. It's structured for me. It's structured for me. It's like going in a uniform, you know? You know, you're gonna show up at the ballpark every day, and you're wearing the whites today. You put on the whites, you're wearing the grays tomorrow, you're wearing the grays. And so I'm wearing orange and black, and so I, I very, very live. I mean, uh, and I do have a few Rocket attire. I mean, I do have some red and blue.
Not much, not much. She's always in Broadhead.
I even got tiger socks on this. And most days I have some type of tiger sock. Because that breaks up great conversation. If you've got attention there, be like, hey, you see these tiger socks? Use, you know, whatever you got, use it.
You know, I always, when I was growing up, you know, years ago, um, you had four schools, elementary schools, you know, and there was so much competition.
Everybody wanted to go to Broadhead now.
Yeah, now listen to that, you know. But I always, even as a child myself, I admired Broadhead for the pride that they had in their schools, always. That has always been something that has stood out. And the fact that you wear orange and black every day, I, I think that's really cool. You know, I think that the kids will one day look back on that and be like, do you remember Mr. Bustle? You always wore that orange. I mean, you know, but it, that school pride, I think, is very important. I think that that's something that's missing in a lot of schools now. I don't think that we, uh, focus so much on that to get the excitement that was once, you know, so much fun. It was just fun at one time.
And the competitiveness, they have the basketball back in seventh and eighth grade and all that, that brought an extra excitement. But being the diehard that I am, I, that, that, that's exactly the reason I do it, is to hold on to that. I hold on to that piece, you know? And I wanna, I wanna be back to that spot, and not say that it can't be, it can't be like it used to be, but it can be better. Um, and I wanna hold on to that, and I wanna keep that sense of pride in there. And I just want, I just want that to be reflective of, of what we are and who we are. And I do rub it in people's faces all the time. Even my Monday, back in pre-COVID time, I always told my kids, we're the best. We don't do that. Broadhead Elementary, we just don't do that. We, we don't, we don't put toilet paper on the floor. You know, we just don't, we just don't do that, because we're the best. We, we, we put it in the trash can where it's supposed to go. You know, I just, I, what are you talking about? You do that? No, we're Broadhead Elementary. You're a Tiger. You don't do, we're the best. And so I just try to instill that in them. I try to give that self-pride. And, you know, nothing against Mount Vernon, nothing against Roundstone, love them all, just the same, like they're Rockets. I mean, that's, that's important to me as well. A big piece of my life is being a Rocket. But at the same time, while we can, why not? You know, and, and try to, and just try to instill that. And then if they carry that piece of pride up there into the middle school or into the high school, so I, and, and here's what I always say. I'll say, whenever that teacher, that first time you raise your hand, she's gonna say, did you go to Broadhead? Yes, ma'am, we're the best, you know? I just wanna instill that, and if you, you know, if you look good, you feel good, you generally play good. And if you feel good about who you are, where you're at, what's going on, then you're gonna give a little bit more attention to what you're doing. And so I just try to, I try to instill that by being a Broadhead Tiger.
I think that's great.
Mr. Derrick, we appreciate you so much. You do a fabulous job, and I think I can speak for everybody in the room that, of what a great role model you are for your Broadhead Tigers. I mean, you do a fantastic job, and, and you support not only your students, but your teachers, wholeheartedly, and we appreciate you.
And if I could ever do it any better, I'll take the direction I can take. I'll take anything that I can do to support, to support my Tigers. And staff as well, um, hands down, I do whatever I could do from six-thirty to five-thirty, or five, I would do whatever it, it takes to, to make an impact. And then that's, that's basically one of the big things that I try to focus on. As a principal, and many as you all know, you make your calendar, you make your schedule, it's gonna change. It's gonna change. But what I gotta think at the end of the day is, while I'm with the people that I'm with, whenever I'm called upon, I gotta make the biggest impact that I can at that time. And if I can just change one today, that's a positive day. And, and not that I don't wanna just change them all. I do. I wanna impact them all. But if, if I can just say, whatever it is that, that you need me for, you've got me, congratulations, I'm gonna give you a one-hundred-and-ten percent.
We see that every day, and we appreciate it and for it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, the next thing on our agenda tonight, and Mr. Bustle, once again, we do thank you.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Listen, um, I had your mother in school, and, um, she is probably the reason I love to read, because she made sure that we read a lot, if y'all know who else had her. But to this day, I just love to read, and, um, you know, but she left an impact. So I, I can only imagine the impact that you're leaving on children every day, and so. So I can only imagine the impact that you're leaving on children every day and so.
And she also left quite a bit of impact on me as well.
All right, operations and actions. There was a, Mr. Hammond, I know there was a couple of things that you had questions or comments or something on.
Well, I'd just like, I'd just like some detail, get down to letters of engagement, looking at a different auditor. But Mr. Allen, did we do an RFP? Did we contact people or did we have additional answers?
Yes.
Was that the only person contacted that?
Yes, I'll let Ms. Jimmy talk about that a little bit. But yes, we did issue an RFP and she can talk about who has responded.
Certainly. As you recall, the board did approve an RFP to be released
Last month.
to potential auditors across the state. We used a list of about 80 contacts that were submitted to the RFP. We've received several phone calls, several inquiries, several contacts that had anticipated on receiving an RFP from that we did not receive. And we did receive two RFPs, one from Chad Allen CPA and one from Patrick and Associates. And had the opportunity to talk with both entities. And Mr. Allen did present the lowest RFP bid, as you can see from the information provided. I believe we gave you a copy of the information that was provided. We will be paying less for our audit than in prior years. And after speaking with him and with others that he has worked with, feel like that he is a good fit for Rockcastle County Schools and recommended the lowest RFP recipient.
And so he's getting the school audit business for some time?
Yes. He has, he actually has been in Rockcastle County Schools before as employee of White and Associates. As you know, White and Associates was our auditor for a number of years. We have always had an excellent working relationship with White and Associates. And in talking with him, I think he has an idea of, you know, Rockcastle County Schools and the, you know, the expectations that we have for finance. And in looking at what he requires in an audit, I felt very comfortable with his plans moving forward.
Mr. Hammond, I will note, we, after receiving this, we did reach out to both Bell County and Owlesley County Schools, which he has completed their audit in the last school year. And they were very satisfied. Both of those superintendents were very confident that he would do a good job.
So he's done audit work, he's just not done.
Yeah.
Done our school system, but he does other school systems.
Questions?
No, Matt, I, I guess the next one to hear is, which, looking at Kirkland Production, just for conversation piece, I mean, I think that, I mean, in reading that, it's obvious what's in hand here.
Yes, that's part of our trauma-informed care plan that we will be presenting to you next month for approval. But that is part of us addressing trauma within our students that is a result of COVID. And I can let Mr. Rupert speak more about this specific speaker.
I watched, you all are the U.S. Secret Service, of course, and most people knows the Secret Service protects the president. They also, they do counterfending as well, but they also do threat assessment for the nation. And so they did a presentation for schools. They do this every year. And the data that I have that I've shared with schools, shared with Mr. Derrick and all of our trauma teams earlier this year, comes from the threat assessments that they've done over the last several years, combining school safety with social emotional health, those statistics. So back in, I guess, February, I attended a webinar from the U.S. Secret Service and it was about averting targeted school violence. It was where schools were successful in stopping an event from happening, a school shooting type of event. And so at the very end of that, Ms. Molly Hudgens, who is actually a school counselor in Tennessee right now, at middle school, she gave a presentation about her experience. And she works with the Sandy Hook Initiative, which of course is nationally renowned for school safety after that tragedy. And so she combines, she had a very unique experience and I'm not going to get into that just because I don't want, I'm excited for her to come and talk to her staff about what her experience was. But she works with that organization now to combine school safety with a trauma-centered approach, an approach for students. And so Ms. Ballinger mentioned at the June meeting, we will be presenting the trauma plan. And the first step in that trauma plan is to provide a very basic first aid, if you will, for trauma for our teachers, how to handle situations. And again, it's very basic. The first step is for all our employees, bus drivers, custodians, we want everyone to attend this. And that's the first step, is her coming and talking about her experience of being with our school counselors. We've had meetings, I mean, with counselors every month. And our school counselors, along with their mental health coordinator Angie Payne, and put together a trauma plan that we will be following up with this presentation with all of our schools, provide just very basic training for all of our staff. And so this is the first step in that process.
And this is just another way that we can support our teachers and our school staff, just like Mr. Derrick mentioned, of needing that support and needing to know, you know, when a student does come to me with this trauma, you know, a lot of us have not been trained in how to deal with that. So this is just a really great opportunity for us to provide that professional development, not only to teachers, but we're going to include our bus drivers, our cafeteria staff, everybody, because all of our school staff are important. And we never know where, is a student going to go to Mr. Derrick? Or is this student going to stop and talk to the custodian about some issues that they're having? So we want to make sure that we include everybody in this training.
Will this be a one-day training for all staff or will it be in different schools at different times?
August 16th is our plan at this point. And we have the high school, we didn't want to leave everybody in one session for obvious reasons. So it's going to be planned ahead in the auditorium. We'll have all of our elementary staff in a morning session and then our middle and high school in the afternoon. So it'll be two sessions.
Last thing just again for sharing conversations with the group on the effort with reading, last time.
Yes, the striving readers grant. Ms. Mattingly, do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, I hope we were accepted to be part of a grant with several other districts in the state with the Department of Education. And it's not striving readers, but it's really, we're not part of the striving readers program. It's, that's a different branch, but it's all part of that same umbrella. And it's a four-year grant. It's over a million dollars that was distributed to the schools. And this next year, and I've got it in my notes, we had 30% of our staff involved in professional learning around literacy this first year. And this next year, we'll have 70% of our teachers involved in professional learning. Because that's what it really is. It's a professional learning grant. So from birth to grade 12, we have opportunities for our teachers to be involved in professional learning with different vendors that have been approved by KDE by that grant. And as the grant manager, I have to, you know, vet those vendors and decide, you know, what's best for our teachers. So for example, our preschool teachers and kindergarten teachers were involved with that early literacy and learning project. And so they attended an institute, I think it was four days back in July before school started, and it was virtual. You know, COVID changed everything. All of these institutes used to operate in person. And they would come into schools, teachers would have PD days or release days, and they would have facilitators who would take them through all of these strategies. They couldn't do that because of COVID. So the Early Learning and Literacy Project with CCLD, we also had teachers involved at the elementary level with the Kentucky Reading Project. And then at the middle and high school, we had Adolescent Literacy Project and then the Kentucky Writing Project. So we had teachers involved in a lot of different institutes, which helped increase their literacy instruction throughout the year. Now, that's going to increase this next year because we're adding a whole lot of new teachers in a new cohort. So the cohort two, this year two group, will get the same professional learning that cohort one got. Cohort one teachers will get professional learning as well, but it'll be different. It'll look different. It'll be more individualized for what they need in their classroom. Last, this past year, those teachers involved had to earn 60 hours or gain 60 hours of professional learning. They had to document and log that time. This next year, it's 40 hours. So it goes down a little bit. The goal is, by the end of this grant, you're going to have 100% of your teachers who have been trained in literacy instruction. And that's not just English teachers at the high school, but social studies, arts of humanities, science teachers. Math is a little bit harder, but there have been some directed activities for specifically math teachers in rural literacy. But that's a different animal in my opinion. That's an English teacher, you know, it's just different. But it's been an amazing opportunity. They've been able to order books and resources for their classroom. And as an example, Roundstone Elementary just placed an order today. They went into intensive research into their own classroom libraries and looked to see how diverse are the reading materials that I have in my classroom. And they used an instrument to evaluate their own classroom libraries and then determine what books they could order to help supplement that and help kids see themselves in the books that they read in their classroom. So it's just been an amazing kind of grant, but it's a different kind of grant because teachers, you know, that professional learning piece, we've been, you know, not had those advantages and not had the money to do those kinds of things. Now we do, and then COVID hit. So it changed the way that that was delivered, but I think hopefully this next year, it'll be a little bit different. We'll have more in-person times and in-person activities and professional development days for those teachers. There's money built into that grant for substitutes, so we want to have release time and release days, even if it's just half a day in the district and those facilitators come in and work with teachers. And that'll be beneficial.
And it's been really interesting to watch as we've been exploring the option of looking at a comprehensive literacy program for our elementary schools, to hear the conversations that the teachers are having based on this professional development that they've received over the last year, how they're really looking in-depth at this, these series and being able to be very analytical about, oh, well, in this professional training, we've learned this, is this going to support this? So it's been, it's been very beneficial and I know it's been, it's been hard for our teachers to be able to be teaching virtually, be teaching in-person, be AB, be in-person, not be in-person and doing all of that transitioning, but also being able to keep up with this, this large number of professional development hours. So I know they're committed and they've done an amazing job.
So that's just part of the MOA that year two, just signing on saying we're.
That we're committed.
So during the course of the four years, there's a continued, they intend to have a continuing.
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely. And that number of hours though will reduce. They'll, just the last year, it's funny, but just in the way that our last several weeks ago, we may get a fifth year out of this, so I don't, but we may get another year. We're told that there will be another year extended. But the goal is that those teachers in this first cohort year will become leaders and we're going to kind of build some capacity among all of our teachers. So as we go through that four-year grant, our teachers will be able to step up and help one another and be true professional learning communities around literacy.
Right. And one thing that we're really excited going into year two, we're going to be able to offer the Imagination Library through Dolly Parton and have the funding to do that for. And that's going to really impact, we talked about preschool and how important that is, but having a book in the hands, if not our students, but our community. Birth to five years, every child that registers will have a book delivered to their house once a month. So we're really excited about that opportunity. That's something we would not be able to afford without this.
So and also we have the opportunity to build into this grant for at least six of our teachers to get National Board certification. We have several teachers in the district who have that certification. But now I'm just, I've got teachers emailing me and I want my National Board certification. I want that. And this grant will help support and pay for their tests, their modules that they have to complete and whatever costs that they would incur with that National Board, they'll be able to get that paid with this grant.
And that's something that's near and dear to my heart, going through that National Board certification personally. I saw the impact and what a better teacher that made me. That changed my whole career, that program. And knowing that this grant supports that, and that is part of my professional growth plan, was to implement that within Rockcastle County Schools. And this grant really helped support that initiative. It's been very positive overall for us.
Are there any other questions? No? Need a motion to approve our operations and actions? Got a first, second, all in favor?
Item 5A, review and approve the Senate Bill 128 supplemental school year. Mr. Rupert?
It breaks down all the, it breaks down the school.
As you all know, the Kentucky General Assembly, back in the winter, I guess March, passed Senate Bill 128. The governor signed that with very little opposition. And that supplemental school year program was established for students to retake or supplement courses or grades that the students are taking. And so the process for this, I think, as most of you are aware, families had to make us aware that they wanted to apply for this, but I made the first. And so we put out a Google form, that was on our website, we promoted that. And the next step is for the board to either approve all of those applications or none of them. And that's what the statute says. We don't take them individually. It's either approve all of them or none of them. And we have until June the first to make that decision. Obviously, we'd like that decision to be made tonight at this meeting. If you look at the materials that were in your drive, there were 36 total applicants for the supplemental school year. Those were broken down. We had two at Broadhead, six at Roundstone, two at Mount Vernon. There's a little bit of confusion. Some families reached out to us and said, if we want our child to be retained, and some principals did as well, is there a need to fill out the supplemental school year form? If they were going to be retained and everyone was in agreement? And I told them, no. If we're going to go through a normal process of retention, there wasn't a need to fill out the supplemental school year form. Because even though whether you approve this or not, those students could be retained through our normal policies and procedures. And we know that's going to happen. We know what happens every year. Some students, especially at the elementary level, are retained. That's not true at the middle or high school level. Generally speaking, when I was middle school principal, we had a couple that were retained. Most of the time that was a very special circumstance, but that's very unusual. And of course, at the high school level, that doesn't happen. Students might fail a class, but they don't repeat the same year. So I believe we have to make that distinction between elementary and middle and high. So even if the board voted not to allow this, not to accept these applications, these six students at Roundstone still could be retained under normal policies and procedures. Do y'all have any questions about that? So we had 13 applicants at the middle school. Our highest grade level, if you look at the next form there, we had eight in the eighth grade and that was the highest overall any grade that we had. Four in the seventh grade, one sixth grader. We had 13 at the high school, two seniors, five juniors, five sophomores, and one freshman. Now, I called, I attempted to call all of these middle and high school parents to talk to them so that I could, so that they understood exactly what they were signing up for and exactly what this bill would do and allow them to do. And it was intended for them to repeat the year. And it wasn't intended for students to take elective courses. It was intended for them to take those same courses. We did, we did tell parents that they could take a course, this is the high school level course. If the student was in a class, for instance, in U.S. history, they were a junior, all juniors have to take U.S. history. If they wanted to take a class like AP U.S. history, which is a more rigorous class, that was still tied to that core curriculum, then they could do that, but they couldn't go lower. And the bill actually says they can't repeat anything from previous years. And it wasn't intended for them to have any kind of exploratory or elective classes. So I want to make sure that they all understood that. And in talking to them, several parents told me that they weren't for sure that they were going to do this. They were on the fence, but they wanted it to be an option if the board approved it. So while we do have 13 middle school and 13 high school, it doesn't mean that we're going to end up with this same number come June first. And that's what we asked them to do. If the board approves it, they have until June first to let us know if they don't want to proceed with the supplemental school year. And I do think that we'll have some that will choose not. And I do think that we'll have some that will choose not to, that the child has changed their mind, the parents changed their mind. Uh, so while it is thirty-six, it may not remain thirty-six.
Mr. Marcus?
Yes.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Uh, I have a friend who has a kindergarten student and, uh, she had, I had asked her, 'cause she's really struggled this whole year with her children, and I had asked her if, uh, she had requested this. And, uh, she had told me that she met with a teacher, someone else, signed some type of I E P, but it's not reflected on here because it's at a different school than what, and I was just wondering, is that a totally different thing?
She's, she's probably going through our normal retention policies.
Okay.
And that happens every year. We have students that, and Derek can probably speak to that a little bit. And every year you have students that parent, teacher might have concerns and might recommend. In situations where a teacher would recommend that the student's not where they need to be, meet with the parent, and we've got policies and procedures for that kind of event. So that, that, those policies and procedures are still in place. So those, those children still could be retained.
I was just wondering, 'cause I, I'd looked down and I thought maybe that, that child might be a part of this number and, and do we have a whole lot that's like that besides these thirty-six?
Well, the thirty-six are the only ones that fill out the Google form that applied for the supplemental school year, not necessarily retention.
What is, what is the need of these thirty-six? I guess would be my question.
The, the last question on the application was, why are you applying for supplemental school year? Uh, there was a variety, I've got all the applications, if you all would like, like to look at those. But there's a variety of reasons. Some say maturity, most say educational enhancement, loss, learning loss because of COVID, uh, increased academic support, that's, that's what, what most parents said when they filled out the application.
And do we know the academic standings of each of these children?
We do, and in particular, at the high school level, there are five or six of these students that would benefit from this.
Were they successful prior to this and then this year that we just, was the weight?
It's, it's, it's varied. I mean, some were, success is a relative term, of course, some, some were, uh, some certainly struggled with the structure, lack of structure, just a lack of, of consistency, there's no doubt about that. Um, so, you know, it's, there's a variety of reasons why parents fill this out.
How, how about the ones that, um, how many of those are looking towards summer school? Cause they want to enhance their, it's a lot of things.
Several of those, uh, and I'm speaking especially from the middle school level, will be going to summer school. At the high school level, it's still somewhat undetermined because we're still trying. It's on a class basis, of course, and we're still trying to get those students to understand P S S. Some of those are still trying to get those, those grades, uh, to where that they wouldn't necessarily have to come to summer school. But if they repeat the year, if, if they failed, if they failed three classes, let's say this year at the high school level, then next year, that, those failures, well, if, if they passed their classes and they, and they did what they were supposed to do, of course, then they would, if they've gotta be in that, in that, one of those classes that they fell, then they would give a B instead of that A. So that would be a great benefit for that student to go through a full year, um, with that learning or reinforcement from what they had this year.
Mr. Hammond, one thing we have made certain with these students, of course, Mr. Repert mentioned that he has contacted these families, but our school principals have contacted them as well and made certain that they understand that there's an expectation that you would be attending our E S S services, you would be attending our summer school services. If in fact it is an academic redo year, we wanna make sure that they're taking advantage of everything that we're offering up to that point as well.
So it's like a mandatory thing? If you're gonna do this, you gotta do every aspect of it.
So all children would have to do that?
That is what we are, we are suggesting to them now. There's always circumstances or issues that might pop up that that doesn't work out, but that's what we are trying to promote is take advantage of E S S, take advantage of summer school and then follow up with this.
And we've been very careful to tell folks, this is a board decision.
Right.
So don't count on being able to do this next year. So please.
Go to, yeah, don't do everything you can in the meantime.
Because if this.
Yeah, if this isn't an option, you've got to do this.
Are, are any of these middle or high school kids, um, if, if this is not passed tonight, uh, are these children gonna fail the grade that they are in?
There's some, especially at, at the high school level, there's some that are in, in dire straits. They're, they're, in high school, they've got seven classes, so they could fail, they could be failing. But some of these are, are not doing well.
All of these thirteen.
Of these thirteen.
Of these thirteen. Um, there's some, some are doing better than others, some are doing well. But the parent felt like, you know, they might have all A's and Bs, but the parent felt like that, that they didn't get what they needed this year. So all of these aren't in dire straits, I don't need to leave that pressure to them, 'cause we have some, some students in here that are good students.
Yeah. So they, so really, without the board's approval vote, these parents could retain their child in the same grade without?
Well, at the high school level, they could.
Not typically at the high school.
At, at the high school level, it's by credits. So there's really no, um, I hate to say there's no retention, but really there's not. At the high school level, you have four years to complete high school, and that's part of the consideration here. Um, you, and high school's based on credits. So students are, can get seven credits a year, they have to have twenty-four credits to graduate. So if a student, um, you know, they could fail two classes and, and move on to the next year and be, be eligible to graduate with that year, but they still failed some classes. So it's a little bit different discussion in high school because it's based upon credits. And, and if, if students don't graduate, if you look at the considerations, um, the major considerations that, for you, um, first, I talked to the principals, especially at, at the middle school, because we have eight in eighth grade, and Mr. Wilson.
That's a lot.
He did, but, but he said he didn't feel like it would have any effect on student teacher ratio. If you look, we've got four seventh graders, so in effect, that would be four students more, 'cause those four seventh graders would be in seventh grade.
Same bag, yeah.
Um, so, um, he didn't feel like that was, the student teacher ratio would be affected, affected at all. They've got two teams that can split those, those students up. Um, and, and all of the principals talked to Mr. Wilson about that as well, um, that there wouldn't, there wouldn't be any major impact. We're talking about about one and a half percent of our school population, so I don't think, there won't be a major impact on student teacher ratio or class size or things of that nature. Not saying there's not gonna be any impact, but it'll be very minimal on these, with these thirty-six students. Um, uh, there certainly is a positive impact for these students that have struggled, there's no doubt about that. Um, the ones that have struggled would, would benefit from this, and others, the others that applied would benefit as well, I believe, from having, having this. The negative impact, and we don't know the full extent of this yet, but I mentioned the dropout rate. The federal debt, the federal classification of, of a student that drops out, it's four years, they've got four years to get through high school. And so the, the, the two seniors that are on here, it won't affect us because they're, they will be graduated students. But the students, the eleven students from ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade, if they, if they repeat a year of high school, unless, from what I understand, and Miss, Miss Brown might be able to speak to this, I understand that K D E has, is going to ask the federal government, Federal Department of Education for a waiver for that to change that definition, that it has to do for three years, give it three years.
But it, that doesn't sound too problematic, right?
I mean, it doesn't sound promising to me.
Yeah.
I mean, it sounds like it's a.
That's, that's, that's something that we're going to have to accept as part of this.
Well, now, correct me if I'm wrong, because you are educators and a lot of this, sometimes I hate to say this, goes in my ear and gets fogged up in there, okay? But, uh, isn't there some type of, uh, if our dropout rate gets, aren't we, we get a classification of a school district that's not doing well, we're still called?
If it's below eighty percent, it leaves a, Miss Brown, if it's below eighty percent, it means it's C S A.
We do not have enough students that this would impact us to that grade of an extent, it's not.
So again, if you look at our junior, if you look at our juniors, we have five juniors, that's quite a few. Um, but that wouldn't, not saying, it, it would be good, it's gonna hurt our dropout rate. If we don't get the federal waiver, Mr. Hammond was talking about, and I don't, I don't, I don't think we'll get it either. I don't, maybe we will, but it would be, it's a K D E asking for that. Um, if we don't get that, it will negatively impact our dropout rate, and we know that. We know it well for the junior class, those five juniors, we know it would for those five sophomores, we know it would for that one freshman. Would we fall that? I don't think so. I don't think we're gonna fall below that because of the drop numbers. It's, that is a negative consequence. But I don't think it would affect us to the extent that we would be at that point.
Uh, the discussion I hear from parents is, uh, this is, I mean, I'm just being frank with you. Uh, this is a, uh, athletic sports, people keep holding their kids back for sports, we've heard this for years, you know? And I guess my question to that, what a parent chooses to do is their own business. However, my comment on that is, do we as a school district have something in place? If a child falls below a certain grade average, they cannot play sports anyway? I'm hoping that's still in place?
Yes, that's part of the K H S A A guidelines and, and our athletic directors monitor that weekly to determine that all of our student athletes have met those qualifications to be able to participate. So that's already in place.
Um, I outlined, in students who participate in the S S Y piece of the supplemental school year program, must maintain academic eligibility requirements to participate in athletics. So they would have to maintain the grades that K H S A requires, that our high school requires.
And if this did not happen with those that are, um, whatever, thirteen in high school, because I, I really look at those through the eighth grade, there's a means to take care of that. If you want your child to get another year, that can be arranged.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the others, uh, could we not, would we not, if they were sincere about getting additional help, offer extended school services, do something to assist them, shore them up for the remaining time that they have?
Certainly we could, and I think we are, we are doing that. Um, you know, you, we gotta prove all of, I don't know, is the.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Is the, is the.
I kinda like the middle ground, if you do this, you kinda have to come to summer school. I kinda like that. I think that really kinda weeds out.
Oh, I think, I think it should be a requirement.
I think it's a, should be a requirement.
I don't know that you can't even require it, it may not be something you can do, but strongly suggest.
Well, um.
I think that we can be very specific and target, for, for instance, if we have a student at the high school that is perhaps failing a mathematics course, and we're doing a mathematics week, mathematics camp that week, then we would require them to come to that. But do keep in mind, we have students or parents that have requested this that are not struggling academically. They're looking at maturity level, they're looking at age, maybe they started school at a young age and they're wanting to give them this opportunity to mature with their peers. So maybe summer school isn't necessary for that, that academic piece, you know, so I don't, we just have to.
I think though, wasn't it intended for academic excellence, not necessarily maturity? You know what I mean, that's how I'm kinda looking at it.
Mm-hmm.
That was kinda created not for, that could have happened in, you know, earlier years. At least for them, and I see it in the grades, and I, I would, I debated this with my own child, I did, I debated with my daughter. Um, and ultimately, when she got back in school, this has happened, her grades have done this.
Right.
Um, so I see it, I've looked at it both ways, but I do think if you're gonna do this, you might need to try to put the extra effort in prior to. That's, I just, from what y'all are saying, that's something.
From what I understand, most districts around, of course, all boards that may be, um, are probably going to pass this.
Yeah.
It was passed overwhelmingly by our General Assembly. The governor signed it, they can't agree on very much, but they, almost unanimously agreed on this.
They already approved it, is that correct, Fayette County?
I think so, yes. They were one of the first ones that.
So it, it is my recommendation to the board that we do approve the supplemental school year applicants. And we have thirty-six parents that feel like this is the best thing for their child. And I think as representatives of our school community, that, that we do need to respect the wishes of what these parents think is best for their children.
Uh, by approving this, is there any type of contract or anything the parent signs that, or, I mean, is there anything different than normal, I guess?
No, we have to, today, super webinar, we have, there's a process, we have to go in and identify those students. Um, that's, that's essentially it. Once the board, we have to do that regardless, we have to go into the G M, whether you approve it or not. But, but if you do, then we have to, we have to go in there, and I think there's some I C code that we have to.
Do you all foresee any other problems? I've hashed this in my brain for a while now. I don't, but that cannot be worked out.
I, I think that small number of students that we had respond, I think that that's to our benefit. I know other districts and discussing this with other districts had much larger numbers of students that apply, and there was the potential there to be some staffing issues, but I think we can manage thirty-six. And like Mr. Repert responded, this probably isn't gonna be thirty-six at the end of the day. It's probably gonna be closer to twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and that's a manageable number that I feel like our, our schools can manage.
And this is minor, but this is, I'll bring it up, just in an athletic world, how is this gonna affect that incoming seventh grader and being able to play basketball? When you have eight, well, you know, four, I'm gonna stay there, or eight, eighth graders, what's gonna, how's that gonna work?
And we don't know that all of those eight are athletes.
True, no, that's true.
They're not all, we, we don't jump to the conclusion that they're all athletes.
And I've thought about that.
And with that, um, if you're older and bigger than me and I won't play, I may never get my turn. And that, and I'm glad you brought that up because that's something that has been discussed.
Which is, in the eighth grade, twelfth grade levels out, you can, you can't, but middle school is near and dear to my heart right now, so that's what I think about.
And a year makes a, a big difference, even at twelfth grade level.
But I mean, it does level out, but then you've got not many twelfth graders repeating, and then you've got some of these eighth graders coming to be freshmen that are gonna meet with all these other kids here or in other districts and. So you.
My hope is this is, this is a one and done, that we don't do this again.
You know, I would, I would say.
It is only offered for this year.
I was really surprised, I thought we'd have more high school athletes. If you look at that thirteen number, um, several of those are athletes, but six, or six and up.
Yeah, they're, they're not.
Well, by the time they get to high school, they've made their friends, they don't wanna.
So.
And I'm just curious, how many twenty-year-old seniors are we gonna have out of this?
Well, we've only got two seniors that, that have applied.
I mean, in the future, in the future, because have any of these children already been held back, you know, before?
That, that's part of the, the, the ability to play athletics.
Well, they still have to be done at nineteen, that hasn't changed. They can't go past, they have to be nineteen-five.
But if they play football and they're, uh, nineteen, getting ready to turn twenty in February.
They can't play.
That's not, the age cutoff prevents that from happening.
Yep, they can't participate.
The age cutoff from K H S A A prevents that from happening.
And I think people get around this in athletics every year, I don't think this will affect, I really don't, I see both sides of it. I don't think it'll affect it. Um, and I've, people have reached out to me, coaches, different people, and given me, you know, it's not athletics, it's not athletics, please don't think that, so. I'm, I've supported.
I think if it benefits our children, I have no problem with it.
I'm gonna just hash it out. Think about it.
I think that it's a parent's choice for their child. So, I mean, that's, I guess that's what I think's right for my child, you may not think is right for her. So, you know, um, I will be, I will be in support of it because of two things. One, we don't have a big number. And, and two, I, I think that, um, our parents need to know that we will try to help their children.
I, I do want to say that caveat again, I think they should strongly be encouraged for extra, 'cause I feel like that's what it's for. If they're, if they're reaching out, hey, my kids know.
Yeah. And that's the path we've already gone down, is students reaching out to them.
So I feel like that's something they should strongly be encouraged to do.
So I guess we need a vote on, uh, this Senate Bill one twenty-eight, the supplemental school year, just, uh, for all that's in favor.
I'm in favor.
Okay? All those not in favor? Yep, one not in favor, Mr. Hammond, the majority, okay? Review and approve the virtual school waiver for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Mr. Repert, you're still in the hot seat.
So as you all are aware, uh, the Kentucky Board of Education did approve a waiver. And the waiver is for attendance purposes. Uh, it'll, it will allow students to be in the virtual setting and attendance to be taken in a, in a virtual electronic means, um, instead of in S E C. Historically, with S E C funding, it's tied to students being at school in, in a seat. And so we count students present and their S E C funding is based upon average daily attendance. This waiver, uh, basically allows for the creation of a virtual school. And so, um, we, we talked a little bit about this in our strategic planning meeting, about the fact that, uh, even though we know virtual is not an ideal setting for our students, we, we do feel, I feel strongly that we need to offer some type of virtual setting for next year. And if we don't, I'm afraid that we're going to lose a large number of students. Um, and so this waiver lays out assurances that, uh, that the board agrees to for a virtual school to exist, to have the waiver for attendance purposes. And so our model would be an academy school within a school, they would be enrolled, um, at the high school, for instance, at the middle school, they would be housed, um, for enrollment purposes, for attendance purposes, they'd be enrolled at the high school. The school itself would be housed here, and this, and this building would be monitored, those teachers would be based. And this building would be monitored, those teachers would be based here. We did fill that out for every grade level. And we don't necessarily, and this is, we're still discussing this, we're asking you to approve for all grade levels. And we don't, you know, if this is approved, we'll have to survey parents to see how many would want to apply for this. And we've got a process and part of this, this is, this is B, the C goes right along with this, the qualifications that we've laid out for the virtual program and the contract. And so part of those qualifications are these assurances, that they would, they would be, they would take attendance, we could take attendance two hours a day, or two times a day, it has to be three hours apart. So if a child was virtual, they might attend a Google Meet at nine o'clock with a teacher, and then they might email the teacher at twelve o'clock saying, I'm working on this, that, or the other. They might come in. Part of the qualifications for this program is that they will have to come in at regular intervals for check-ins, for checkups, we might say. That's one of the things we've learned from this year. We, and this year, it was obviously wide open because we had to offer it to everyone. We couldn't really put qualifications in place. We had to just, anybody that wanted to could be virtual and that was state mandated. But with this program, we can set the parameters for it. And part of those parameters, obviously, are going to be, students have to come in at regular intervals for check-ins. They have to do regular, regular Google Meets with a teacher. So again, if you look at those assurances, there's several things there that have to be approved, that we have to do for this, for this virtual school. And then I would like to, do you all have any questions about the waiver and the document itself? But I can answer specific questions, I don't want to go, I hate to go through all of this.
Going back to Mr. Buck. You know, my concern with this would be, you know, my concern with everything that I do a lot. I would have concern with K five. I mean, I, with, going without saying. And I think that there's a means to deal with six, twelve without this option. You know, long story short, and I'm going to just usher it that, but I, the low, the younger students with a virtual setting, we talk about interactions, role support, internet service, ability of parents to assist, special needs students. He's, Mr. Buck, now since he's here, third grade, and of course, we know, the older they get, the more on track they are, the closer they are to the, to where they should be if they leave primary level, they have greater success with the virtual arrangement, but I just, I couldn't, long story short, I couldn't support it for K five.
Indeed, the, we don't feel like it's an ideal situation for K five either. The issue that we're going to run into, if we don't have this K five, is we know some of these students are never going to come back to us. We know some of these, that we've got four hundred and sixty-nine right now that are virtual. We've got, at Mount Vernon alone, we've got around sixty. Rousen has a small number, I think you'll have thirty-seven, something like that. We know some of those, we would lose contact completely with them. Now, some of them will come back. We say you got to come back, some of them will come back, I think most of them will come back. But there's going to be a large chunk that are not going to come back, that we would lose. I did poll the principals, and this is, this was, this was my numbers, K through twelve, they estimated about a hundred that we would potentially lose to home school that wouldn't come back. I think it's fair to say, just estimation, that's all we can really do, speculation. I think we probably would lose twenty to thirty elementary students to home school if we didn't offer something. I think we can, I think there's a middle ground where we can offer something and have qualifications. We can, we've talked about making K one, two even more stringent than these qualifications. But we really don't know, we don't know how many K one, two students that we will have that want to do this. Once, if we, if the board approves this and we can look at that and see how many that we have, just because the waiver is approved, it doesn't mean we have to offer it for K one, two. We could still say, we're going to offer this third, fourth, fifth, or whatever. But it does give us that option to be able to offer that for K one, two, if we feel like we're going to lose ten kindergartners. And maybe never get them back in our system again. You know, I, I don't, it's not good for kindergarten to be home school or a virtual setting. I don't think that's good at all. I think that's, that's not a good setup. It may be that we say to kindergarters, they have to come in twice a week. But if we did lose those students and we're never able to get them back, I think that's tragic as well. So.
And I, and I would note, you've referenced home school, but not only home school, but going to surrounding districts that we have contracts with. And as you know, that open borders is going to be, take place the following year. And we do know from surveying and discussing this with surrounding superintendents and school boards that, you know, there is going to be a virtual option. And if those, if we don't offer that, then they can go across the border to somewhere that can offer it. So this is an opportunity for us, although we know, I taught first grade for many, many years, I know how difficult it is to teach a student to read, and you compound that by putting them in a virtual setting, it's extremely hard. But we have an opportunity to do it better than anybody else. And does that mean that we bring them in twice a week? Does that mean that they're required Google Meets on Monday to plan out their week so they can come in on Wednesday and Friday to get those supports? You know, this is an opportunity for us to keep our students and to keep them with us as Rockcastle County School students and provide a virtual setting that is better than anyone else can offer.
We certainly have learned this year from.
We have learned.
It's going to be perfect next year. But we have learned and been able to adapt and, and, you know, with our next year, if this is approved.
So you're saying Broadhead had thirty-seven students, Mount Vernon had sixty. You don't have the capacity in this building to pull that many students in every other day. So will those students be pulled into their local level, like their local school?
So out of that thirty-seven, some of them are going to come back next year to the person's.
I would say Broad Elementary, if I'm prediction, I would say we would probably lose ten students if we didn't have a virtual option. And now, those, even though, as I'm kind of speaking out of both sides of my mouth here, even though I do, we all agree that kindergarten, first grade, second grade even, instruction needs very much support. But also, at the same, from an outsider looking in, you think, oh, I can teach them letters, I can teach them sounds, I can, it just seems like, you know, the lower the level, oh, that's easier because I can do all these things, I can teach them. And so, and we, and we do have some of those students who will just choose that home, that home school option, just because they've had it now, they've seen this environment, they liked it. And I would predict about a third of those would want to stay. And, and I don't know what we would do about it if we didn't.
I have a question here, Derek. How, the ones you have on virtual right now, how are their grades? Like K one, are they doing pretty good or is that Excel?
They do, they do pretty well. We have some structures, yes, I would definitely try to change. I would, I would definitely go back to the drawing board after the end of the year. Because we placed ourselves in a spot where we were, we were addressing all students and, you know, meeting the needs even of those who didn't choose that route. And so you wanted, you wanted to, you want to structure yourself in a way that we could find success. And we wanted to also put ourselves where we were providing you, the family, with all the resources we could and all the things that you, that we could possibly give you, but we also didn't require you to maybe necessarily jump through all the hoops that we need you to jump through. And so, I, we are successful, I mean, there's probably a handful, Miss Hager, that I would love to pull back to Broad Elementary right now. I'd love to have all thirty-seven back.
Right.
But there's about, there's about five to seven out of that thirty-seven that.
There's home schools that succeed, kindergarten, I mean, they're, they succeed.
Ten-four.
Yeah, so, you know.
But still, yet, you just know in your heart of hearts.
Oh, yeah.
Don't post this break, but you just know in your heart of hearts.
No, and that's why we're all here, because public education is the best.
That is not, here, it's, it's just not the best situation, it's not the best environment, it's not the best thing for that student.
Right. But what's good for your family?
So we come back down here, and we say parent choice?
Yeah.
That's where we're at. And so.
No, I think you would, yeah.
And we're going to have those supports in place. I mean, we're really looking at providing, of course, we're in, at the big planning stages, but providing mental health supports to our virtual students, making this, this setting within this building, a very trauma-sensitive setting, so when our students are coming in, that we're providing them with resources. Later on in our agenda, we're looking at the school-based mental health advocate, but having that person very active and working with our virtual students so that we're making sure that we're putting them in touch with the community-based resources that they need to address perhaps the trauma that they're experiencing or the mental health. So we want this to be a very broad, whole-based, addressing all the needs of the whole child.
So where are we looking? I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, what about staffing?
That's my question.
What's my question?
Where are we bringing the staffing from?
So we've got, we've got on here the proposal for a school principal for a virtual academy. We have that later on the, on the agenda. That person would not just be a principal, of course, that person is going to also have to be teaching at those classes and monitoring those virtual students. We already have staff in place, we have Mr. David Owens here, and we have Ms. Betty Holt, we have instructional assistants that are already here. And then, and that's really, the rest of the staffing is going to depend on, after we survey and we look at the contracts and we look at the interest level of, are we going to have to transfer perhaps someone, you know, from the middle school, the high school, or an elementary school here to be providing virtual supports? But it's very hard to determine those needs until we have a solid number of students. But.
Is there going to be a deadline to know for your?
Yes.
We, we would like to start this process, if it's by the board, as soon as possible so we can start getting applications. So, because again, it's a process, and just because someone applies, doesn't mean they're going to be accepted. We, and we may lose some for that reason. But we've got to have, we've got to do this with integrity, we've got to have standards. And I believe, again, I believe we can, we can have that balance. The academy, obviously, has been here for a number of years. Right now, there's three certified teachers that are tied to this, to this building. There's two instructional assistants that are here as well, so we have five staff members. If the board approves the principal position, that would make six. And then, for instance, if we had, if we had fifty high school students that wanted to be My Rock Online next year, then we could look at, obviously, the high school's losing those fifty students. So we could, as Ms. Ballinger said, we could look at those teachers that did a great job, Google certified, that enjoyed teaching virtually, that would be their cup of tea, so to speak, that would maybe want to come here and assist with that effort and their work. And that would, that would balance. The students are going to be somewhere.
Would you do that for grade levels, though? Like, to me, elementary school and high school is really different teaching.
Right, it would have to be their certification. So within the staff that we currently have here, we do have someone that's certified that is elementary, we have special ed staff here already established, and of course, middle and high school. So we have that foundation.
How many students are here?
We have right now about sixty-two.
That's a year right now?
Now, some of those are online. Mr. Owens' students are performance-based, and that's a little bit different classifications just for high school students. The academy is an A-five, A-five school, that's how it's set up, it's a little bit unique, and the Department of Education created that a few years ago, to create flexibility for students that were struggling with social and emotional problems, that have behavioral problems, that were having, that needed some flexibility, basically, a plan B, you might say.
So we had sixty-two before we got into COVID?
Yes.
Yes.
Really? We did, the numbers at the academy have been increasing over the last few years.
Sixty-two current.
Currents people here in this building.
No.
Virtual, virtual.
Combination.
We have some that are at the academy.
That's what I was wondering, how many?
Prior to COVID, were they virtual as well?
So you have six staff members for sixty-two children?
The ones that were, that were prior to COVID were with Mr. Owens.
In person prior to COVID?
They were a performance-based student, which means they were essentially, they didn't, they didn't, they were not in person. They were performance-based. And the state, again, allowed that several years ago. And that designation, students either, they either, at the end of the year, just for high school, that's, that's been, that's been.
Have you looked at other platforms of other districts? Have we looked at their platforms?
What districts?
Similar to this.
What districts?
Of the current, of what they have, or of what? So we've been looking at Corbin Independent, at what they're offering, and Barron County has some really good offerings. Mr. Repert has attended several webinars where school leaders from other counties have been talking about what plans they have in place. So we have, we've talked about going and trying to start touring some of those facilities to get some ideas of what they're offering and how we could model our program after that.
Nearly every district has a My Rock Online school. It was a performance-based, and that's been going on for several years before COVID.
But we.
Because of that. If you remember a few years ago, the General Assembly passed the bill that raised the drop L H to eighteen. And when that happened, when that happened, we knew two things were going to happen. We knew that some students were going to need an alternate setting. And we also knew that home school members were probably going to, and those two things have happened. And we see that, you know, the strategic planning meeting, the graphs that I showed you all, reflects that over the last several years, three years ago, we had twenty students. That, that number has, has increased. COVID had helped it, obviously.
Have these previous programs, have they had elementary K through twelve?
They have not.
So this is for everyone?
That's the waiver, that's the reason for the waiver.
But I don't want to confuse you. So, and I know it is confusing, but, so you've got an A-five designation, that's performance-based, and that's an academy.
This falls under?
But this, no, this is, this is a, this is a waiver so that we can count these students for seek purposes in their school, and they're, they would be enrolled at Rockcastle County High School, they would, they would be centered here.
So essentially, we're just using this building and the employees.
So that we, so that we don't have a situation like this year where, you know, the high school teachers were monitoring virtual and.
And I think that goes back to what we talked about last time, a different name. I think it needs to be something different than, don't you, do you agree with me?
Than the academy?
Yes.
Yeah, so I think the My Rock Online was the designation of the digital My Rock Online, and then our other students are enrolled at the academy, in the academy, and it is a separate. And, and I will, will say that, that Mr. Owens and Ms. Betty Holt, they have a real success story of what they can offer to those students that have been in this A-five school. I know that's not what we're discussing tonight as far as an approval.
I have no doubt about that.
But the students that come and the way that they're able to support them and give them the one-on-one attention and provide them the flexibility to be successful, it's really remarkable. And we, we have students that graduate and that would not necessarily be graduating otherwise.
And I applaud that, yeah.
And they, they do fantastic work and they're dedicated to their students and they're doing home visits and they're calling and they're checking, and they're bringing them in, and they just are amazing.
But do you think elementary school, though, to me, seems completely separate than, than this? Maybe I'm wrong.
It is, you're correct. So that's why, just because it's the building, we don't want.
Because it's, they're such a need.
So there may not be, it may just be a different structure.
Right.
For the kids.
Correct.
You had talked about, I'm still thinking about that number. You said six staff members for sixty-two students right now?
Yes, essentially, yes. Then, now, that's, that's.
That's a really high number, I mean.
That's including instructional systems.
So do you foresee teachers wanting to transfer up here?
Potentially. I mean, I, we would have to see the numbers that we have, to see the students that we would, the number of teachers that we meet, first of all.
Because for me, I guess for the board, that's going to be a big issue, is if we're going to have teacher support to do this. If, if they will leave where they are to come here to support the program.
There's some teachers within the district that have completely excelled at providing instruction virtually and have been models across the state, have presented at conferences, have done a great job of being a virtual teacher, that, and I feel like those, those teachers would express an interest. And I know some of them already have reached out to us.
And it would take, obviously, we want the right person, the special person that can thrive in this setting, and if you look at the waiver, it emphasizes the qualifications for those teachers as well. I do want to emphasize, again, Mr. Owens has worked with those performance-based students the last three years, and it has been, that's if helped our drop L H, there's no doubt about it.
Well, out of sixty-two, how many of those are, what percentage of sixty-two are from the high school?
Majority, almost, almost. We have very few middle school students.
And with that...
Thirty maybe at this point. And those are all academy, those are performance-based.
The number of sixty, and you said, three years ago, we had twenty, now we got sixty. Maybe that's alarming. And I think that we would do well to offer, you know, try to ramp up our counseling because in years gone by, yes, there are good homeschools. But in years gone by, when I was at DPP and I've talked to other DPPs and working with DPPs, that's a small percentage that's a good quality homeschool. Yes, they can teach and read. They can excel, and they can go to college, and they can do anything that first-class public students can't. But you're talking about a very, very small percentage of parents that are able to have a homeschool, and I'm just hung up on K-five. And we have to help, we have to help what we've been doing for six-twelve. But I would hope that we, when I say we, every classroom teacher, every administrator, and every counselor are doing what they can to connect to the home and emphasize the importance and significance of coming to school because just in case you want to get a job and you want to have a life after school, it will depend on what you've done in school, whether that be at home or here. And I, the K-five, I just...
I certainly understand what you're saying, Mr. Hammond. You know, you talked about before how that life has changed because of the screen. Life has changed. I mean, our, where we were at, we are right now at a critical juncture in education. And whether we like it or not, virtual instruction is not going away. It's only going to expand in the future. And if we don't have this option, we're gonna be, we're gonna lose our students.
And then, let me, I'm sorry, but with our ability to connect via technology, we do know what the lay of the land is here. And then, to say that we're gonna require them to come in when we can't require them to come to school, I mean, you can talk about truancy and what you get and what we do. You cannot hardly require anyone to do any of that.
Well, it is going to be part of the contract that they sign. And if they do not meet those qualifications, then they will no longer be able to participate in the virtual option.
There would be, then they would...
So, then they would have, you know, so that's, you know, that's a risk that we have to take. But if we do not have a contract and we do not have strict expectations, then I think we're setting ourself up for failure. And what we are wanting to completely avoid is a failure narrative. This is an opportunity for us to have a success narrative. I mean, Rockcastle County Schools is built on providing success and showing success for our students, and this is an opportunity for us to do that and to do it better than anyone else has done.
How about the student that's not measuring up on what contract says? What's gonna prevent that student from just then, at that point in time, I think I could go to homeschool?
There is nothing that's gonna prevent that. But at least, we can have integrity and know that we've done everything in our power to provide every option that we can offer them. We've offered them in-person. If they do not choose to take that avenue, we've offered them a virtual option. We've provided them with mental health supports. And then, with integrity, at that point, if that's a parental decision, then we can know that we've done everything we can to paint that success narrative.
And I guess it's gonna be my last comment. From kindergarten and project, around, for every teacher, every bus driver, every one of them needs to do what we can to make that child want to be here. And of course, that was the same thing years ago. You need, we need to have something here that they want to come. And I know we can't sell that to everyone, but our success really depends on that. They, we have to be the market where they want to come.
And I think the number, by looking at the number of students that have come back to us when that option was available, and to see those numbers that have decreased of the virtual students, I think that we can very well hold our head high to say that we are providing that and that our students did want to come back to us. And I know Mr. Derrick can speak to that as well. But, you know, kids that initially went to a virtual option, you know, they were ready to come back, and they were grateful and glad to be back in the classroom. So, although I don't feel like this is gonna be a huge number of students that this is going to impact, I think if we don't provide the option, then we're selling ourself short, and we're not offering our community everything that we possibly can.
What is our actual number right now for My Rock Online?
I think it's four sixty-two, something like that. It's about sixteen point eight percent. It is down from about thirty percent at the beginning of the year.
And what's, of those four hundred and sixty-two, how many, what rough percentage would you say was being successful?
I shared that at the strategic planning. I don't have that right in front of me. I would say, I think that number was like sixty-five percent. Now, again, how do you determine success? And that was from a poll from, I polled all the principals, asked them to gather that data. And so, success could be determined in a number of ways. But that's essentially what they said, what they said. About sixty-five percent, we're successful. And again, those that are not successful, you're not gonna qualify. And at that point, we might, we might lose some, get into homeschool. But I know we'll lose a lot if we don't offer some.
Do you foresee new students coming into My Rock Online? Like, for example, if my child, oh, maybe I wanna try this next year. Do you think anybody is leaning in that way?
I don't really feel that. I haven't, I haven't felt that.
I've had a few that have talked to me that that's sort of what they're thinking.
After the in-person, you know?
I mean, I do, I agree with you. It's the way of the world. We're doing a live, I think, right now. People, probably reaching more people than we ever have. And if you do virtual, you're gonna reach more students in a different way, like you said. I think it's just gonna take a lot of details to make it work, and I know you all know that.
And we will. I mean, I think that we know, and my staff and this entire staff, the staff of all of our schools, you know, our number-one priority is, are the students of Rockcastle County. And no matter what we have to do to provide whatever means that we have to take to provide an education for them, then we're gonna do that. And whether that's in-person or whether that's virtual, if we offer a virtual option, it will be of high quality.
And I assume the in-person meets will be separated by grade levels, or? I'm just thinking of a parent with a kindergartner and a senior.
No, I mean, those meets will have to be very structured to their academic needs.
My first or second year on the board many years ago, I went to a conference in California. The keynote speaker was Bill Clinton, and this is what he spoke on. He said, "The future of public education would be sitting at home with a computer in front of you." And people thought he was crazy. So, here we go, folks.
Yeah.
That's true. And they're gonna be integrated more in class, too.
Yeah, and we, it's our job and our responsibility as leaders and educational leaders to change with the times. I mean, we have to be innovative, and we have to be innovative for Rockcastle County Schools and for our entire county because if not, you know, other school districts are gonna pass us by, and that's not something that we ever want. We want to be the leader, and we want to be at the forefront of providing options for our students.
I have one more question, and then we'll vote on this. With this being what the direction that public ed's going, okay? What do you feel is, it's gonna take the impact of the teacher away? The importance, the, I mean, eventually, it's gonna be a lack of hiring. The profession's gonna go down. And that's one of the things that concerns me, you know? We're gonna, if we vote to approve this, really what we're doing, because the twenty-to-one ratio that we think's great right now, well, eventually, it's gonna be, well, we have more students at home. We really don't need a twenty-to-one ratio. So, that's one of the things that concerns me because I think everybody in this room is in agreement. Nothing can take the place of that one-on-one, that that teacher has being with that student. And I feel like this is just pushing us farther away from that. It's gonna take that impact away.
That's kind of what I was getting at, Angie. Like, and I think we probably don't need to offer this. I can see the need, but it's gonna drop our in-class student-teacher ratio. So, we're gonna have to shuffle our staff presently to cover this.
We...
This won't create any positions.
No, no. And until we know, just like we said, until we survey our parents and survey our students to see where the interest lies, it's very difficult to say, well, I'm gonna need three high school students or three high school teachers because we don't know that yet until we know where those numbers and those grade levels fall. And then, at that point, we can make plans for...
And it's just the offers first of the year, not kinda like it has been, it's two.
Can't find it, two months and two weeks.
That has been a...
But you can go back, it says after a semester.
Yes, yes, yes. But once you are enrolled, you're here for a semester.
We would encourage that.
But then, they're in class from there forward, I guess.
Right.
Goes back and forth.
Exactly. And I think in the guidelines that Mr. Repper laid out, that was very clear of those expectations.
Yeah. You know, I have to say, I have, I have a grandma that called me the other day to ask me questions about this. And she was so pleased because her plans are signing her grandchildren up, and she's spending her winters in Florida with them. And that's, she's raising them. And I was like...
She can have that capability.
And, yeah.
Because if she doesn't do it here, she'll do it somewhere.
She'll do it there.
And then, House Bill five sixty-three passes.
They can do that.
I know that's the nickname, I guess, that, that is not going to be good in my estimation. And I really fear what that's gonna do.
If we don't, then she can go forward and enroll them.
Because how will we monitor kids? We could have kids sitting right here in the back end school, Jefferson County. That's not a good...
What about our overall numbers? Which we've talked about before, and I gave you a little graph from...
Living in a time of no accountability.
I'd like to see that here. But in comparison, off the top of your head, to our enrollment to five years ago, to today, how much has it dropped?
We probably lost, five years ago, we probably lost a hundred and fifty students. At the strategic planning meeting, I went through, I had...
We had in-depth discussions.
I'll share it with you after we're done. I've got charts and graphs, I will think of where you authored, charts and graphs. So, I'll be glad to share that with you afterwards.
It was a pretty staggering number, wasn't it?
But it has. It's, we've lost about three hundred since two thousand and ten students.
That's crazy.
Three hundred?
We've lost about three hundred.
And then, with that, Mr. Repper?
Part of that population, sorry, I forgot you, but part of that population declined. You know, our population, at the two thousand and ten census, we were seventeen thousand. We're projected to be like sixteen-two now. So, our population is declining. Now, it's not declining at that rate, but it is declining.
What about the percentage of attendance prior to COVID? What was, what is our most recent number as far as the percentage of attendance of those?
District-wide? Probably two years ago, off the top of my head. Again, I had all those numbers at that meeting. I think it was like ninety-four, something like that.
But we did show tracking attendance and an increase over the last two years since we instituted the truancy diversion.
ADA went up, which was...
Middle and high both has gone up over the last...
The elementary's declined. But I do think that's partly because of the truancy first program that we implemented, and that's been effective this year.
We've also contributed that as well to the, having the partnership, the telehealth partnership with Rockcastle Regional Hospital because instead of sending students home automatically as a student enters the nurse's office, we were able to use that telehealth service.
That is a little bit, and then, some of these, but this is all the immigrant that are in normal primary school. And I just did some highlights here.
We've been really focusing on our, in our strategic planning work on this data and on looking at attendance and how that's gonna be impacting our students and impacting what offerings that we, that we have over the next several years. So, that's been very much a part of this strategic planning work.
This virtual plan that we're gonna vote for, is this, after this is put in place, is this something that has to continue year after year?
No, the waiver's one year.
It's a one-year waiver, okay.
And that's part of the reason, the structure's a little bit different. I talked to Katie E. and Ben Maynard, and he said seventy percent of the districts were... And we've, well, I've talked to him a lot, he's been my buddy over this. He's, Ben Maynard, he's one of the, I can't remember his exact title, but he's been my contact there, Katie E. But what was your question?
One year.
It's one year, it's one year. But they, I think they're gonna evaluate. The expectation is it will continue if the waiver's for one year. So, they cautioned us, that's what I'm saying, they cautioned us with the structure of this to make sure that we structured it canon in case that it wasn't offered next year. So, it is a one-year waiver.
We need to go ahead and get past this. I need a motion to approve this.
Are we gonna approve both, the waiver and the...
No, we're just, this is, I'm sorry. We're just gonna do the virtual school waiver for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor? All opposed? That's all right. Mr. Hammond is opposed this? Okay, next is five C, review and approve the My Rock Online qualifications and the contract.
Of course, these do go hand in hand.
Sure.
So, we wanted to make sure you all approved that before we got to this point. We went over most of the qualifications. The contract is very similar to what you approved last year with some notable changes. Number four is they will fulfill all attendance requirements. Of course, that's part of the waiver, weekly Google meets and check-ins at regular intervals, and we will define that. We also, Mr. Owens helped me draft the contract and the qualifications because he really is as knowledgeable and worked with this for as much as anybody in the district. So, I appreciate his help in drafting this. We did change number three. Last year, we said four hours of work. We found that wasn't a very good measure, so we changed that to completion percentage. And I do think that would be a much more effective way of monitoring student progress. As far as the qualifications goes, do you all have any questions about that? I think most of those we discussed already.
Straightforward.
Pretty straightforward. Once they, once we, we will put out an application through a Google form. Once we have, and we'll have a deadline, once we have that, then we will start processing those applications. We will look through those, and that process will obviously take us a while because we'll look at student grades and look at how they fill out the application, justification, those kind of things. And then, we'll go from there in terms of knowing whether students will actually be approved.
Want to have any other questions for that? Motion to approve the My Rock Online qualifications and the contract.
I'm making a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
I'm not prepared.
All in favor. All right. Item five D, review and approve the twenty-one, twenty-two salary schedules. Ms. Ballinger?
Okay, you've had the salary schedule uploaded in your Google documents. We are asking for approval of the twenty-one, twenty-two salary schedule. I will note, as it was discussed in last month's board meeting, that the four positions that we have had in question, that one of those, our director of instruction, that will be a retirement for the upcoming school year, that has been taken back to fifty-five extended days. And it will be noted in the board minutes, as any of these others are vacated, that those will also as well go back to fifty-five days. So, does anybody have any questions about the salary schedule?
Yeah, and I appreciate that, I appreciate that clarification. Is there anything, I didn't see any color coded or anything of that sort. Is there anything other than it's just a straight three percent increase from what was there before?
Three percent, yes, no, three percent increase. It is also an addition of the school-based mental health advocate, which is an approval that will come later. That position is on here. Just Mr. Repper referenced last month, the increase in the family resource positions. So, we did do a slight increase to each of those positions to make us more competitive with regional schools. At one point, we were the highest in providing those, that salary. We dropped to the lowest, and now, we are, this comes to where we are in the middle, that it's, we've contacted that regional director to get all of those salaries and compile those, and we are in the middle at that point now.
How does that, how does that measure up with the grant itself? We're probably exceeding the grant.
Exceeding the grants to some extent, yes, we are.
And without going back to the, how much were they raised, I'll tell you a bit more about that.
Do you have that, Ms. Sweet, the comparison? I don't have that uploaded, the previous one.
It ain't very, I mean...
It's not a significant amount, but...
I can't remember. I looked at that earlier today.
So, the base for a new hire was twenty-seven thousand. It was raised with a bachelor's. It was raised to thirty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-two for a new hire.
It went from what now?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven thousand for the base to thirty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-two. Those, I'll just mention, for new, the structure for new hires, the salaries will be able to be covered by the grant.
It's more experience.
With some funding available for the budget to have a program within the school that's supported by family resource. Where we, as Ms. Ballinger mentioned, where some grants still exceed the budget are maybe some positions that have been in existence for a number of years. Maybe they also fund more than one position. They also have an assistant that works with family resource. So, in a couple of those cases, we do exceed the grant in general, in support.
Well, low enough, twenty-seven to thirty-one?
Thirty-six thousand, four sixty-two.
Well, I think that's warranted because...
And this is for which positions?
Family resource.
No, any position is not, is per tenant, but it's especially true with family resource youth service center.
And they, those, those positions do require a bachelor's degree, and it's very difficult to attract candidates when you're paying twenty-seven thousand dollars after they've been in school for, and, and received and earned that bachelor's degree. It's very difficult. And this, this is a key position. Yeah, they're working two hundred and forty days. And this is a, this, I don't have to tell anybody in this room the value of a family resource center director. I mean, I'd know that Mr. Bustle referenced that over and over in his presentation of the, the important role that that, that position plays in our schools and.
So I have a question. So with our GEAR Up positions, they're also a bachelor's or a master's. But their salary schedule is drastically lower.
Whenever we, I can share a little bit of information about that. When we received our funding from GEAR Up, they give us an, a ceiling amount that we can utilize for salaries. So we have, um, two academic specialists and two college and career navigators. You know, the college and career navigator position is a hundred and eighty-five days. We utilize the balance of that grant to have those two positions. At the time, it was something that, you know, the district was carefully monitoring that we.
So we don't pay anything above that grant?
Right.
Just completely grant-funded.
Yes. So we're not supplementing the grant with general fund dollars.
Because those are very vital positions.
Yes, they are a hundred and eighty-five versus two forty, so that is the difference in that, yes.
There's still not very much money.
No, it's not, but.
I called Ms. Carrie today. I, I didn't have any issues with any of the salary thing. I had a concern, so I'll just make a note of my concern. I, I'm not in favor of, um, the human resources manager's salary.
I'm not either.
I am, I'm in definite favor of hiring someone for human resources. I do have an issue with paying, starting them out more than your family resource, it's two hundred and forty days, that's been with us for twenty-five years. I just feel like that is something that is, uh, I feel like it's, even though I know, I know this position is very important for the district, but that's just my personal take on it. So when, when I go to vote, I vote for everything except for that, so that can be noted in the minutes.
And I shared with Ms. Angie when we had that conversation that, and as you all well know, we are the second largest employer in the district. The hospital employs roughly eight hundred people, we're six hundred and thirty-two. And currently, we do not have a position that's dedicated to human resources. You know, in reaching out, the, the hospital employs four people to do that work. I think that, that, that is, that is a hole within our district currently, right now, that is a need that we have to address. We have multiple people within central office doing, pulling together to do all that work. But as you all know, that is when there's an opportunity for errors. And we want to make sure that we have one dedicated person to that. In a, in, in configuring this salary, we did do research and look at surrounding districts and what that was offering because that would be a two hundred and forty-day position. It is considered a human resource manager, which would be, you know, comparable to a director's position within central office. And our surrounding districts are ranging from, this is with ten years' experience, we just looked at the middle of the road, someone who had been in that position for ten years. Um, seventy thousand, seventy-two thousand, seventy-two thousand. So what we've offered here with ten years is seventy thousand. So that would be comparable to our district surrounding us with the bachelor's degree, two hundred and forty days.
What are each districts surrounding us? What, I mean.
We've got Pulaski geared, and then I looked at Fleming, which does not necessarily surround us, but is a, a similar makeup as far as number of schools.
What is Pulaski?
I couldn't find it. I told Carrie I got to their website today. Brandon, you're better than anybody else, is all I got to say.
I don't see how we can compare to Pulaski.
No, I mean, so just while we're in this, too. With, uh, since this is a state meeting, you know, I think that when the motion is made, the motion needs to be to take that out or do whatever with it, maybe bring it back at a different time because I don't think you can vote for it and say with the exception.
It's a special meeting.
I make the motion, uh, move to approve all of this with the deletion of that or, or that position to have this particular amount. Uh, and jumping forward to the position itself, uh, going back to the numbers, I've been on the numbers, still on the numbers with reduction in, in students. You know, that Pulaski's not Rockcastle, and we've lost three hundred kids in a short period of time.
Well, their revenue is totally, it's like comparing grapefruits and grapes.
It is, and then with the, the, and we've continued to decline with students, and I don't think it's, the, I, I could not be for the position with that, with that thought. I mean, another district office position, we've already talked about the, the days and the additional days. And we're going to add another position in central office with those days? Whatever you recommend on the salary is okay, but the position itself, you know, I'd, I'd say delete it and bring it back at another time, maybe. Because I can't be for the position itself.
I'm, I'm in favor of the position, I'm just, I'm not in favor of this salary.
Did you approve the position in the last?
It is, it is, no, it is, it is not currently approved. It is on the agenda to be approved, yes. So going back to what you just spoke of, of central office employees. So we have absorbed the digital learning coach position. So this salary is less than that position. And then in just a moment, Ms. Wendy King is going to talk about an absorption, or actually a change and a shift in how we're going to offer speech pathology services, and that is going to be an additional saving. So I feel comfortable knowing that we have those two additional savings that would more, way more than account for this position.
And I, I appreciate that, but the digital learning coach was just added. I mean, that was a new addition, so to remove that is not really something that's been there for quite some time. That position was not there.
But that is a position that will not be in this next year's budget.
I, I understand, and I think everyone else does too, but that was a recent addition. So to keep this position is just keeping a recent addition to me.
Well, okay, I can agree with that. The need for a human resource person for a employer of over six hundred people, though, is an extreme need. I mean, we have, we need someone within that office that can track new hires, that can track certification, that can track certified evaluation plan, that can do all of that work, that, that's missing, all of that missing piece of that. And when, when you have multiple people doing that work, that's when mistakes happen. And, and I'm, I think you can agree that we've had multiple discussions over salary schedules, over certifications, over all of these issues that have popped up. And this is an effort to correct and to make certain that we have all eyes on these needs that we have within our school district.
And again, I, you know, I, I just don't think that the number of central office personnel has very much, I mean, we re-categorized, and we, depending on the need of the year, and from year to year, it may not remain exactly the same. But if you look at the actual number of district personnel today, and you compare it to three years ago, seven years ago, ten years ago, it's not changed much.
It, it actually has quite, changed quite a bit from the year, Ms. Jenny, I think we did that, we've gone back and done that research. So from what year did we look at?
In two thousand and three, there were thirty-five central office employees. In two thousand and eighteen, with a realignment that occurred, there were eighteen. A realignment that occurred in two thousand and sixteen, there were seventeen, and as of today, we have sixteen.
What's the, can you tell us?
That's quite a bit, that's almost half.
For all of them, you know what I'm saying, like?
Of the budget for all of those positions?
Well, I don't, you might not.
I would like to know that.
Yeah, I, yeah, like, uh, like, central office total staff two thousand and twelve versus two thousand and sixteen versus now. I mean, you understand what I'm saying? You may not have that there right in front of you.
I don't have the budget from two thousand and three in front of me.
Yeah, yeah, no, I don't mean to, but I mean, any years, just curious about that.
But in doing that, and in, in decreasing that staff, you know, multiple people have taken on different roles. And that's just the way that, that I know that Rockcastle County Schools has, has chosen to proceed to be fiscally responsible, and I admire that. But at some point, we get to the point that if we do not have enough staff, it's difficult to do the work that needs to be done. And, and then errors take place, and, and then we have problems, and we're trying to avoid that situation.
Well, I think that what we need to do, I mean, this is going to be my recommendation, if you all are in agreement. I'd like to recommend us voting for this, taking that position out for, and we can vote, Misty would be here next month. We can get her input on it also. Uh, I think that's more than fair, but I know you probably need the rest of this salary schedule.
Yes, absolutely do.
Do you all have a problem in doing that?
I just want to say, I'm, I'm support, I'm in support of it, um, because I know that's a lot of work.
Oh, I, it is, listen, it's, and it's needed. I really feel like this position is, and I'm not against the position, I just.
Maybe we need a, um, I'm just on, um, like, what, what the details will be, like, what will this job?
That is in your board report packet.
It's on there.
Um, you will have to look at.
Community Ed, what does, what's that going to entail?
So let me also add that piece to that. Um, we have a grant, a community education grant that is twenty thousand dollars. Um, that twenty thousand dollars will be applied to that salary. So twenty thousand dollars of that would be grant-funded. So if you're looking at the initial salary for a person moving into that was fifty-five thousand, so thirty-five thousand dollars of that salary would be coming out of the general fund. And then twenty thousand of that would be funded through community education. And, and that, that position is exactly what, what the title describes. I mean, working with our community, um, bringing in grandparent groups, doing, um, parent nights, working potentially with Title I programming and to, to getting our parents involved in our school system and our, in our community.
What is that grant being used for now?
We currently.
Salary.
It's in general fund. It's in general fund, salary.
Yeah.
So it really, though, it would, it would be a wash then, because we're already using that money anyway. I mean, though, you understand what I'm saying? That's almost a wash. I, I see what you're getting at, that would be used toward that position, but if we're already using it toward a salary of someone, then that's a wash.
The, the programming has changed that we were utilizing that position for. When adult education changed, um, that adult education is one of the components of community education. It's one of the five strands. And we feel like that, um, putting more emphasis on the work in the community is a priority for our school district. And that it would be best utilized, you know, by focusing it back on the community.
That we are using that money currently.
We are currently using that.
So even though we may be only paying thirty-five thousand, and the grant's going to be paying twenty, we're still paying into a retirement at the fifty-five?
Yes.
Correct, even, so there's.
Position with a bachelor's pays into KT RS, and the retirement is three percent. Compared to a classified position, um, for next fiscal year is twenty-six point nine five percent.
Definitely.
Miss Carrie, may I ask where this, um, is this from this, the job classification? Where does this come from?
Yes, so that, um, where did it come from? So we have, yes, so there's, there's job descriptions that we go to, to create, you know, like a standard job descriptions that we utilize.
I don't see a lot of, um, let's say nineteen ninety-two.
Yeah, and those are standardized.
Technology, like, I feel like this position would be very, uh, web-based or a lot of technology-based, you know, the way you could, this.
Right.
Is that something that could be included more in, into that?
Certainly.
This is very, it's good, it's good, I just know that that's a, I wouldn't want the job.
That's with everything.
If I, if that was a big detail.
Certainly, certainly.
Ms. Jamie is awesome.
Yes.
And I know this will help her, so that person needs to be able to do that.
Yes, absolutely.
So what we need to do is we need to approve this salary schedule. I would like personally for the human resources manager position to be taken out of this approval. I, I think we can do that, and to approve the rest and us come and revisit that.
I agree with that.
Open to that effect.
And I'll second.
And then we'll get to this, um, and that is, we'll get to this, I would say that we table position itself because of the conversation on that and come back to that with the salary at the next meeting. When we get to that, but, uh, anyway, motion's accepted.
You're two, you're two things ahead, okay?
I'll second.
You second? I'm in favor?
I'm not in favor. I'm in favor of going ahead and approving it as it stands, but.
But you are in favor of approving everything else, yes?
And everything else.
Okay, all right, there we go. The next thing on our list is the approval, review and approve the human resource manager, which Ms. Carrie has been talking to us about. Mr. Hammond had asked us to table that and bring that back at another meeting, and we can do that, Mr. Hammond. I am in favor of this position wholeheartedly. I think this is needed. Does anybody have any questions about the description or anything like that besides what Angie had asked?
Technological piece.
That's, that's all, I just would, just like it to be more detailed because, you know, this world, that needs to be, if you're going to be a human resource, you need to have that.
So when we bring this back at the following month, then we'll make an addition of, of qualifications leading to.
Maybe more updated version as opposed to nineteen ninety-two?
These are.
There's a statewide, um, package of job descriptions that are not updated. And, um, those numbers all tie into our salary schedule.
So this class code, Ms. Angie, that you see in the top right corner, that ties in. Yes, ma'am, yes.
And that's, that's true, of course, it is old, and it is old. We can revise it only the same number, can we not?
Yes.
So we can add the technology piece to that and.
Whatever revision they can.
Ms. Jenny, you probably would know this, have we ever had a human resources person that you know, we have?
There, um, there, Ms. Becky McNew, actually.
So she served as superintendent in human resources.
When that position was vacated, um, finance took on that work. And, um, then, um, that changed, and, and the person that was doing that work had, had prior experience in working in that, that particular position, so it was really easy for her to take on that role in finance. And we were, again, it was during that time, Rockcastle County Schools was working towards them, preschool, or, um, all-day kindergarten and all hands on deck, and we all, you know, chipped in, did the work. That individual is no longer there in that position. So when that happened, it was really all hands on deck, and we all took a piece of that to try to make it work and just to survive for the time being. And, um, it's just more than, more than we all can, can do and do well. We want the work to be done well.
And I think that's the key.
That's the key, yeah.
That's the key.
You had talked about Ms. Becky doing that years ago. She had like a combined status, though, didn't she?
And the role has changed then.
Okay.
There's so much more that needs to be done in unis. I think finance will work very closely with this position. And, and there's other roles in, uh, central office that we did not feel. You know, someone that's looking at certification, someone that's, I've got a long list of things that.
Was it previously, previously a bachelor degree position?
No, okay, I don't think so.
There's some training that, there's other roles that are going to be part of this position that, um, that an individual with a degree, um, would be beneficial. It, we need to further develop our support to our staff. Our, the needs of, you know, the needs of students have changed because of COVID. Human resources, um, is one of the top priorities of companies today because of COVID, because the need. Human resources, um, is one of the top priorities of companies today because of COVID, because the needs of staff have changed. Um, so, you know, it's looking at unemployment, um, you know, contracts, certifications.
No, I know, I know.
But, um, you know, training for our social skills teams.
First large ability.
New hire training. There's a new category.
Retirement, resignation, personality speaks, new hire orientation.
Having that time to speak with our staff, explaining the policy, the procedures, and the options of our staff.
Who does that fall to now, Ms. Jenny? Is that you?
It falls to a bunch of us.
It's, it's spread, it's spread out among the entire.
So there's nobody, if they walked into the central office, a teacher, there's nobody that has all that on file for that person?
No.
Well, we all had, took a piece of it, and we just have really, everyone has worked really hard to make it work for the time being. Um, but we need, we need to focus on that work and really build a human resources, um, effort to serve our staff. Our staff deserves that attention from, you know, central office. Um, you know, oftentimes they have questions that they need answered.
And sometimes they like to have a dedicated person that is confidential, maybe?
Yes.
Um, and that, that's what they can trust, or have that, you know, have it all, and this is one person they can go to, or, uh, you know, a department.
And confidentiality isn't, isn't each part of that. There are myself and, um, payroll and accounts.
I think my concern, I'm sorry.
I mean, to interrupt you, go right ahead.
I think my concern is, you know, we're posting or we're talking about a position with a bachelor's degree, and they were starting out at twenty-seven thousand, and we're gonna increase them to thirty thousand. And then we're talking about another position that has a bachelor's, we're requiring a bachelor's degree, and we're gonna start out anywhere from seventy to seventy-five thousand.
With experience, with ten years' experience.
Fifty-five at the initial.
That's still thirty thousand dollars.
That's still a huge, I mean, we've gotta find some middle ground, because, you know, I know that our resource, they're vital. They're in there working with our kids. Their job is non-stop also. I know they have different things that they're doing. But they're meeting the needs of how many kids?
Certainly. And, and we value all of those individuals.
You know, their hustle.
The, the difference, Ms. Hannah, is, you know, oftentimes we've had positions that have been funded based on grants. And that's the biggest difference in those positions. Um, you know, we've tried, we've actually put some additional notes on here. You know, if they were school-based and grant-funded, or school-based and, um, you know, district-wide. Um, oftentimes, you fund a position based on what the grant allows or what the budget is available. And, um, certainly if the district wants to supplement, you know, the grant, we can do that. You know, we can raise that salary. Um, it's going to come from general fund dollars. And if that's something the board wants to do, we can absolutely, you know, do that. But, um, historically, we have tried to operate within the means of the grant.
Well, and I will make one more comparison here too, because I was talking about Black County, which is a small district, but in Galveston County, especially when they care about the number of personnel. We have, um, payroll, payables, and a part-time finance officer. And when I say part-time, I mean really part-time. Uh, and work. But, you know, we can find something different than, you know, what we have and find next door where they've got more help, less help, or whatever. But, um, it is a choice to be made. What you're saying about the comparison both, I think all of it really needs to be looked at and weighed. And looking to next year's salary schedule, I would recommend, when the salary schedule is done, that, that any changes be color-coded. Where it's easy to detect, that's why I'm willing, I'm willing you to talk about what we had changed.
Anyone else having questions about this? I need a motion, uh, what we're voting for is to approve the human resource manager position.
But not the salary?
Not the sal- position. Second? I'm second.
I can approve the position, but I don't approve the salary.
All in favor? Mr. Hammond, vote no. Okay. We have a three-one vote. Okay, review and approve the itinerant speech language pathologist. I can barely see that. I can barely see it too, so I might need to go see them after this is over with.
Alright, well, we were, um, if you looked in your, um, department reports, you will see that, um, we've been looking at caseloads a lot over the last little bit, that time of year, um, for special education department. And so one of the things that we, um, have looked at is we have in the past, I think for the last couple of years, we've had a, um, an agreement with hands-on therapy, um, for a couple of different positions. And if you look at the, um, there's like a little color, little narrative that I kinda wanted you to see. Um, currently, we have, with hands-on therapy, we contract for a speech pathologist that comes to two different schools, um, in the district. They have for a couple of years now. Um, we also contract with a physical therapist and two PTAs, physical therapy assistants. So in looking at just savings and looking at someone that is hours, like, you know, what are the benefits, what's the cost analysis of having a speech pathologist that is hours? Um, if you look, just the hourly rate that we pay our speech pathologist is seventy-five dollars an hour. They're with us seven day, seven hours a day, that, that's five hundred and twenty-five dollars. This was a lot of math for me. You all know math is not my thing. So, uh, uh, they also get a seventy-five dollar, a seventy-five dollar, um, daily travel rate. So that daily rate for that speech path ends up being six hundred dollars a day. So when we look at that, and we look at what would that be, right, I mean, so I, like, I'm not a very good math person. But when I look at the benefits of our direct hire, now the, the benefit not only monetarily would be this person would be ours. Um, and I say itinerant because right now that person that we contract with, they do go to two different schools. Um, so this person would receive our PD, our training, they would know how to, how, you know, specifically we want them to write our IP goals. There's just a lot of other benefits, other than just the monetary benefit that you see as the price breakdown. And I did this for, you know, depending on the way some speech programs, some, like EKU, if they leave EKU from the communications department, they leave with a rank one. So I put first-year rank one. UK, they leave with a master. So it just depends on where this potential graduate or whoever we hire. It depends on the, on the, the degree level that our potential hire would have. So I did a couple of different price rates, but you would see that the total annual cost for the district would be sixty-five thousand dollars if they were brand-new, right out of school. But I also did like a price comparison for, well, what if they were twenty years in? If they were a twenty-year, you know, if they had twenty years' experience, that's a seventy-eight thousand dollars. So we have a potential savings of, up to forty-two thousand dollar savings for a first-year employee, or twenty-nine thousand dollar savings if they were ours. Um, for us to do it versus going through the contract services and hands-on.
Ms. Wendy.
That's how many days?
Uh, this would be, the contract is five, is, we've got four days a week with our contract, and this would be five days a week out of one hundred and eighty-five day.
We would be getting them for another day than what we're contracting with as well.
I can support that. I'm, I'm making a motion to approve what you have. That's easy enough.
And, and, and here's my, and my rationale, and to, too, just to give you another thing, we currently, that would be seven speech pathologists that we have in the district for, um, a total of three hundred and eighty-four students that they would be servicing. So I would have to do that breakdown of, and I said itinerant because I'm not sure how that would look, you know, district-wide. Like Mount Vernon, we currently have three speech pathologists just due to their numbers. Broadhead, we have two. Rounston, we have one. The middle school has two, and Rock, oh, the high school has one.
Our contract with, uh, this, you said hands-on, when is, when is that up?
This is the month that we normally renew, so that's why I did not have you renew it, because I wanted this to go first.
Okay.
So we have that many employees that we're looking at paying that yearly too?
Well, they, those, that's their, that's, we have six that we have that are hours. We have six speech, speech pathologists that are hours.
That we already employ. This is just one.
This is just one that I'm saying, hey, look at the, the price, this would be, cuz we're currently paying that for our contract. And that's what I was gonna ask you, is that just for the speech pathologist? Just for the speech pathologist. That's not including the physical? That's not including. But now, they, they don't see, we don't come four days a week. Their, their numbers that they see us are minute.
The other positions.
The other positions are very minute.
That's just all I wanna clarification of.
They're very minute. When I started looking at our contract services, I was like, wow, we're paying, you know, and I, cuz I have to turn in a Medicaid billing. And why did we have one contract because it was itinerant, and not the others, the full-time in school? And, and our, our need, our, our speech numbers have continually risen over the last couple of years. Our speech numbers just, I mean, think about it, like Mr. Derrick can speak to that. You know, that's our number one way that we qualify students for, typically for preschool. Like, we do those preschool and kindergarten screeners. Well, that's the one way that we can say, you know, hey, that's a surefire way to get you. And our OT, how's that, how, how many do we have? Well, that's the other thing that I was gonna speak, you know, if you look at OT services, like currently, and I'm glad you said that, cuz that gives me a little open door. My hallway, looking for, our OTs currently, their numbers are out of the, we have two that we have in the district. And both of them have super full, super full caseloads. So just thinking on down, you know, our contractual services, what I would love to, OTs, you know, they're, they're crazy expensive too, if you're thinking about contractual services. But I would love to see us potentially, you know, thinking long-term, like I think Ms. Jane McGee and Ms. Carla, they're both over, like our speech, we like to keep them around sixty-five, which if you think about sixty-five kids and your workload, that's crazy, crazy huge numbers. If we had this person that would give each speech teacher around fifty-four on their caseload, which, you know, keeps us under that state, you know, state kinda mandate, which is great. Our OTs, both of them are at like seventy-fives, eighty, eighty-plus. So, I mean, which is crazy. You know, that's crazy for them. So what I would love to see us do is have some of that contractual services and have an OTA. Like have an assistant that would just come and help with therapy. You know, they, they wouldn't do any of our billing, they wouldn't do any of the assessments, but they could just help see students. Like one day a week to kinda help, you know, our two OTs out, just with therapy services. And this mostly is elementary school days? Elementary. Mostly Mount Vernon or? Well, it's, it's across, it's across district, and Mr. Derrick can speak to that.
Now, you're talking about a hundred and seventy-two days, and they have eighty-five students, that's eighty-five meetings. That's eighty-five art meetings.
And they, and we want them, I'm actually. And we want them, I mean, and he, as, you know, I'm sitting on those air meetings, you know, they have to not only, I mean, their data that they're reporting is crucial. Like as a parent, I want to know what those OTs, I want to know what those speech pathologists, I want to know progress. And it's not the same if I do an excusal, and I say, well, little Johnny's doing great. I want to know hard factual evidence on how my child's, you know, progressing in those therapy sessions.
Do they document that, like, if they were to go to speech at the hospital, you know, that would go on a patient portal, it's still the same way?
And that's part of how, like, our Medicaid billing services, you all approved that, and I don't know if you saw, that was one of the things, like, we're, we're switching back to, to Easy Man. That was one of the things, I sent out a great report to all of our, um, our speech and our OT. Um, that's one way that they document that. That's one way that we get some Medicaid billing services back. But we really want them to have time to not only have therapy sessions, but also to, you know, to input that into IC and input that into like Easy Med or Comp claim, whatever they're using. But those therapy notes are so important, and I feel like that, you know, their caseload's eighty, eighty-five. I mean, we want that good integrity, you know, intentional, their job is just as important as teachers and, you know, in, in providing services.
And that's what I was gonna say.
So we really want to make sure that we're, we're being intentional in the use of, you know, funding and making sure that they are giving the best, you know, that we're providing the best for, you know, our students, and that we're really, you know, being wise students of our money. And I think this is one way that, yes, we, we're saying, hey, we can use our money for students.
I mean, a PTA is a bachelor's.
The need, we're gonna go.
It's not worth money.
I, I would have to agree with that, but a lot of people like the school setting. Right, right, right. And, and I think that, I mean, we'll see the performance of our later. Do you all have any other questions about this position? I think it just makes sense.
No, I think it's what works.
That, that person would be out.
They will lose their job.
No, no, they'll just go to another school.
Yeah.
Alright, so, uh, thank you, Ms. Wendy. We need a motion to approve the speech language pathologist.
Motion.
I'll second on this one.
All in favor? Okay. Uh, item five G, review and approve the SRTI positions, which are, I'll go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you go ahead.
Um, yes, so we are asking for approval of academic interventionist, one at each elementary school, the Rockcastle County Ac- Academy Principal, and the school-based mental health advocate. Um, as you came in, I think Ms. Jamie had placed in front of you some guidance from KDE that is specific to SRTI funding and what those funds can be used for. And again, we know that those funds are, have been provided to school districts to focus on learning loss, to focus on providing mental health supports, and providing, um, various ways of meeting student needs. So we feel like for Rockcastle County Schools that we would like, um, for the next two years, and it is noted on here that these positions will be funded for the twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So we are not, we are not offering to extend that past that time because we do not, we only want to use our SRTI funds for that. Um, but providing these academic interventionists within our elementary schools for those two-year periods that can specifically target students. And if you will look at their duties and responsibilities, um, we were very focused on ensuring that these, these individuals would be working directly with students all day long. There will be no administrative duties associated with this. We want them directly, um, providing services to students and targeting, um, interventions. Um, and then we've had a lot of discussion about the academy position this evening. Um, and if you will look at the last one, which is the mental health advocate, um, this would be a support person to continue to provide the services that Ms. Angie Payne is providing across the district. Um, I don't think that any of us expected, when we created that position earlier in the year, that it would be so valuable and so used across the entire district. And this will continue to provide those additional supports for our students. And, and the topic of our discussion all night has been social, emotional learning, meeting the trauma needs of our students, and, and being able to provide supports for our students, and, and getting them to resources within our community. So that, these are the, um, three positions that we would like to focus our SRTI funding on.
So that, the mental, we already have the mental health advocate, we're just gonna take the salary for that person out of, no, or is this in, in addition?
This is in addition to Ms. Angie Payne.
Okay.
So for two years, this, this position would support her role.
Support her role.
So will she oversee that position?
Um, it will, the position will go directly to Mr. Rappert will be overseeing both. He oversees Ms. Angie Payne's position currently. He will also oversee this one.
She's the coordinator, so she would continue to coordinate those services throughout our schools, of course, our school six and community academy. So this position will assist her in meeting the needs at high school rounds, or wherever they might, wherever they might be.
And my apologies, that's probably somewhere the, the salary for the two academic, or the three academic?
Um, yes, it was on the approved salary schedule. Yes.
Is it on the last page with the others?
It will be a teacher salary.
Okay.
It's a teacher salary. It's a hundred and eighty-five position based on their, their rank. Yes.
And that's paid out of the SRTI.
All of this is SRTI funding for two years. It will, none of this will be funded out of the general fund.
Ms. Jenny, could you just give me, I mean, if you know this, I don't know if they handed it down to you yet, can you give me a general, uh, or approximate number of our SRTI funds?
Mm-hmm, three point.
Um, SRTI is three point seven million, but I can tell you that's about the amount.
That's alright.
Three million, seven hundred and three thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars for SRTI. And, um, SRTI, which we have not started looking at that or planning for that, is a little over eight point three million dollars.
So we haven't received any of that funding?
Um, we, part of this work in looking at, um, the positions, and we will have a complete plan that will be submitted to KDE for approval. And once we receive that approval, we can spend those funds.
We have to draft a plan to submit.
Yes.
So I guess one of the questions I'll ask, uh, as far as the, the academy principal, that is a two-year position currently, right?
SRTI. We haven't done anything with this. That hasn't started. Yes.
That will be a two-year and be, okay.
Yes, all of this will be two years with SRTI funds. And then that will provide us time to analyze. And then that will provide us time to analyze to see if that's a position we need to continue or we don't, but that gives us, yeah, the waiver is one year.
We won't be through this maybe. Maybe we won't need it. After we get through this.
For S R two or S R three? Three, yes, we have not started working through S R three plans yet, we're just focused right now on our S R two funding.
Does anyone have any more questions for Ms. Carrie? Okay, so what we are approving, we are approving, uh, S R two money positions. For academic interventionists, that's three elementary positions. Rockcastle Academy Principal, and a school-based mental health advocate for district-wide. I need a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay.
One second.
Okay, all in favor?
I'd have to vote no because of the principal thought, you know, I'm for the other, but it's a no vote in the group yet.
Thank you, Ms. Carrie. Item five H, review and approve the monthly financial reports.
Okay. I carry my. Um, you have on your, um, on your document, the monthly financial reports for the month ending April. Do you have any questions, if you had an opportunity to look at those?
No, but Ms. Jenny, I, I was looking, when I was looking at something earlier today, I meant to call you, I was going to ask you about it. Uh, on that, the, the document that you presented to us for us to look at, it, it had like our, our balance each month, I think you had like two thousand nineteen and twenty. This current year, does that have any of that CARES Act money, is that in there, how much CARES Act did we get?
We did receive, um, some CARES money that would be in Fund Two.
Fund Two, okay.
Um, and those were, those funds were utilized to, um, support, you know, our expenses through COVID. Primarily, our funds were utilized, that initial CARES funding and S R one. Um, we utilized to provide one-to-one technology for our students. So, that money has been expended and reimbursed by the state.
I was just looking, because I was, I was looking at the final number on there, and I was just.
In the board reports, um, for finance, I just uploaded a three-year comparison for current, uh, month, so you can look at cash flow and.
I think that's what I was looking at that I was wondering about, okay.
As we began to move toward, uh, June and a four point two million dollar, uh, payroll, we wanted to just, you know, to show you that comparison.
I think that was the one I was, I was curious about the CARES money. And how much that was, how much was those S R one?
Um, off the top of my head, I don't think I have a.
That's all right.
One was, um, one was like seven hundred thousand, and one was a hundred and twenty thousand. But, um, again, we expended, um, like the seven hundred thousand, um, was totally used on technology for our students.
Okay, one more question, then Laura, you can ask. Uh, did we ever get any FEMA money?
No, we have not.
Okay, okay, I've just, I know you've been trying to.
Still working on it.
Still out there.
Okay, I, I was hoping.
It's nice, perhaps.
It was nice.
Yeah, I was hoping, yeah.
I'm still going to make them tell me no. Um, on, but you mentioned the expenses related to FEMA. We will run back into, um, our S R two plan, um, you know, should we not receive any funding, and more than likely, we won't. But, um, those expenses, um, that were just on, um, in sanitizer. Um, the cleaning materials needed to do the, you know, the cleaning in between every class. And, um, P P E, um, around two hundred thousand dollars is what we expended. And we had not used any of our other CARES or S R funds for that, because we, we had nothing left from once we purchased the technology.
Thank you.
Uh, grand total, of course, and I think this is, is grand, but, uh, overall with S R, CARES money, S R one, two, and three. You get, uh, nearly thirteen million dollars. And that's a whole lot of dollars, or.
Biden just keeps printing off that money, don't he?
A district of this size, of course, it is every time.
But we can't get no gas.
But we need to make, and, and course, in that, seven forty-seven, and so, and then, we fit seven forty-seven in the device primarily.
Yeah. Um, many other school districts already had a large number of devices for, um, for students. Um, Brandon, I think we started out with a hundred and twenty, maybe, there about.
I'm assuming some of the ones we have are already old, you know, so.
And the ones we got now is going to be old by the end of next year.
Well, building into our S R two plans, we have refurnishing those and re, and building that into our long-range technology plan. And, and how thankful I am that we made that wise decision initially to invest in these, because we would have, this past school year would have looked very different if we had not had technology in the hands of our students.
So, and these are insured, correct?
We have warranty.
We do have a three-year one, we have a three-year warranty. We, you guys, you guys go back there, if you go back to our south, my south, I mean, you can see, um, some of those.
So what does the warranty, what does the warranty cover, just out of curiosity, because one of my kids. No, my kid's fine, but like, they were telling me that there's a friend of theirs that already went through one, and then he had some friend, or she. That helped them tear up a second one.
So, so, we know the damage is intentional, the students get in trouble, I guess, which is that.
And that is that, that happened the first of the year, we had some.
But, 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 the warranty is actually care accidental damage, so literally if, if it falls against the wall.
Accidentally on purpose?
I'm on your team, but if it falls against the wall accidentally on purpose, they will fix it, that device, one time per year. Um, of course, we have extra devices, so we, we can't wait for them to fix that device, but we send that device to sale, it goes in the mail, they mail it back, takes a while, we'll see a stack that will down there now, and recycle through them often. Um, so we will give them another device if we think it's accidental, right? Now, if we don't, we have lots of kids who have to keep their devices at school now, um, it just depends on the situation, right? But, uh, complete your accidental damage, so, uh, Mr. Rupert went into a flood zone with sludge this deep in the house, he got the Chromebook back, and we got the Chromebook back. Um, and that was covered, the Rockcastle River flooding, right?
Well, I don't think this child on purposely did it.
I've got one back there now, because the family heck's open, they brought us in, we put it back, and it's still there.
Kids are so.
We'll take it out in a few weeks, but, um, you know, get any, anything. Like, there was a house fire, um, there was a house fire, and three Chromebooks stopped running up, um, accidental damage, that's still considered accidental. So for three years, we're okay, and after that, things get scary.
Well, they're going to be worn out after that anyway, if they last, you know, if they last that long.
Our plan is not for that, our plan is for, our plan is to give to us at kindergarten, and they will, they will keep those devices until fifth grade. We'll replace those devices in fifth grade, they will keep those devices till the freshman year, and we'll replace those devices in the freshman year. I think that's the best thing we can hope to, hopefully, we make the best use of our three-year warranty, um, and then, and then we struggle to fix the ones in the room. Um, because even, because once that warranty's gone, like right now, we can just send the device today, we, we get a box, they send us a box, it's free, put it in the box, call FedEx, they come get it, they take it. Um, but then we're actually, you know, in three years, I'm, we're likely to fix stuff, I'm likely to change, I mean, we're going to have.
We'll have a Dell graveyard.
We have to fix stuff now, don't get me, don't get me wrong, because we have a lot of devices that are, that are still over, that we still have. But, it's going to be a lot harder when we have ten screens going down, and we, and we don't have a device straight out immediately, because you can't, we just don't have that ability. We have, they need a Chromebook, well, they need a Chromebook, especially this whole year, we've been virtual, there's no, this morning was testing, our first day of testing. Um, if Chromebooks didn't work, nothing else mattered, right? So they're testing, here's your new Chromebook, right? Uh, maybe you can't, maybe you can't. But nothing else mattered, they have to do testing, so, uh, that's just the way it is. But, but lots of kids can't take them home, um, lots of people lose them, and they, and then, we don't necessarily hurry to give them another one, we'll put them in the classroom, um, and then they find them, and they're harmful, or, you know, we heard that. You have no idea the crazy stories that are, but.
I can imagine.
If we know it's intentional damage, they don't get to take their device back. And lots of, lots of internet searches have been bad, and they don't take the device home anymore, and, you know, they get, you know, it can't just be free for all. Now, at some point, I hope, it would be my intention now, I'm posting, but, um, I, as far as chargers go, we have to have some kind of fee system, I think, for chargers. But that'll be.
Is that something that's getting lost along the.
If they bring me a charger that's broken, it's covered under accidental damage too. But if their dog chews up their charger, and then they don't bring it to me, they just throw it away, well, that costs us money every now and then, you know? So that's it, so, we have to ask, you know, if, if you lose your charger, then I think we have to, they just say, you have to give us money, I ain't that prepared for money, but.
Do you ever foresee a voucher program for like if you want to get the money for this, but make it better as a parent? Do you know what I mean, like we could buy our own, and that would be in, in.
So, so that's, that's, that's worse, and I take that because, uh, we can't do online testing, so today, we can't do online testing.
Not all uniforms.
As for the art labs, do online testing, as they have, you know, I actually have to do that, they, they brought their own Chromebook in, because they can use it in general, but can't do online testing. So, um, that, that's kind of useless, can't necessarily monitor web searches if it's not a device. I don't have control of that, like, when we have to do online testing, well, I just submit app to that class, right? If we switched to Gmail a few weeks ago, we switched to Gmail, I know, I just took off the other cap, put the Gmail app on there, it's there. They can, they can Google valid dot com, or they can just click the Gmail button, like I, that control is invaluable, right? Um, and so, so without that, you know, without monitoring searches, and, um, and that's, and that's, and that's important, we can't, we wouldn't be able to tell that they're working.
Could you make it your device? Could you make it your device?
No, it gets complicated too, because, you know, if it's your device, I can't control your device, I can monitor your, your web traffic, right? That's, I can't do that to your device, but I can do that to my device. If that makes sense, yeah, it would be.
And I appreciate your monitoring, I saw that email, or I think the, the blast out, that's great. Thank you so much for doing that.
Been moving forward with that, trying to move forward with that for a long time, testing with staff, works really good.
That's awesome.
And it's going to, we'll make that, I'm going to at least send them an email.
Yes.
If we have, you know, a lot of parents, but.
And then I think also, if we're a student, you can get some kind of voucher or some kind of discount from streaming services, am I correct on the providers?
And that's some information in my department reported there about that.
Yes, that's great.
But that starts tomorrow, actually, we don't really have enough.
So they did get it, yes.
That's pretty good.
I was just asking Carrie if you all got that, so yeah, we got that today too.
Fifty dollars a month, plus.
I did not, I didn't.
It's amazing.
For household, um, and then we know it'll last for six months, where we took the money from the outside, money was approved. But, but money was already approved, and they just haven't, they haven't made the plan. So, yeah, it's going to be good, and all of our families qualify because we're C D.
That is.
Literally, every household qualifies, doesn't matter.
Yeah, because our whole district should get it. Because we get pretty much.
Yeah, that's great, that's great.
I'm waiting till tomorrow, just to see the application, and then eventually this week, hopefully, we'll prove that.
That's good. I'm excited.
Ms. Jenny, thank you so much. Uh, we need a motion to approve the monthly financial reports.
I'll make a motion.
I got a first and a second, all in favor?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, review the superintendent's personnel action report.
Yes, if you will take a look at that, it's loaded in your Google Drive, and if you've got any questions about that. Yes, we do, it's that time of year that our, we are posting retirements.
Wish them all the best, happy retirement.
We have four retirements.
Item seven is our department reports.
Those were also loaded in your, in your Google Drive, if anyone has any questions for any of our department heads.
I think I dumped a head, I'm sorry.
That was important.
No, but Brandon, I just wanted to, uh, I just wanted to thank you openly, when I called you the other day, I had called Ms. Carrie, and Ms. Carrie's like, here, talk to Brandon, and I just want to, I appreciate your help. So I just wanted to make note of that. I do appreciate it.
I may have helped all, you know, I may have helped all of you sometimes.
You did to me today, yes. For some reason, my Google Drive was crazy, I couldn't, I had tried two or three days in a row to get my stuff to pull up, well, it was.
Brandon, picture.
Yeah, he did.
Good.
He directed me.
Uh, Ms. Carrie, superintendent communication?
Um, yes, so, um, as Mr. Derek mentioned earlier this evening, we did start K prep testing today across the district. Um, that has gone very smooth, um, at all of our schools. Um, appreciate all of our school staff, that is a lot of planning and a lot of organizing, and a lot of making sure that, that each individual student's needs are met. And that they have a successful testing environment, so, thank you to Ms. Mattingly for organizing all of that, and, and to our school staff and principals and teachers for get, for making certain that that has gone smoothly. For our students, um, graduation, um, again, seven o'clock on the twenty-fifth at the football stadium. Um, the twenty-seventh will be that rain date. Um, we do have prom this weekend, um, the fifteenth, so, looking forward to that for our high school students, and very thankful that, that they're able to have that. And I know that our families are thankful for that as well. Um, this weekend, we do have our K S B A conference. In your folders, you have your registration and your hotel information, so please make sure you take a look at that, look at that. Um, we, it is different this year, we will be staying in the Louisville Marriott. The conference is being held in the conference center next door, it is not in the Galt House, so, make sure, make sure you take a look, take a look at your reservations.
Take a walk and choose, because we are not, we have to walk a block and a half to the.
And that is the closest, the Marriott is the preferred hotel for the conference, that is the closest for the conference center, so.
We stayed there a few years ago for some type of conference, or I did, I went to like summer training or something.
Um, next month, I will be coming to you, um, and delivering my Capstone project as part of the superintendent onboarding program. Um, I will have Dr. Carter will be here for that, along with my mentor, Talora Slosser. Um, and there, we will have a meeting, a short meeting prior to that as board chair, um, to participate in that, but I will be presenting the Capstone project to you at that time. We will also, at that meeting, need to do superintendent evaluation, so I will be sending you all, all of that information prior to that, so you can start preparing for that. Um, and also today, I was contacted, I had known that Rockcastle County Schools was going to be featured, but we were featured in the Christian Appalachian Project, um. So, Spring, Summer Magazine, um, for the work that we do for the Hunger Walk and the work that we do with, um, CAPS. So, I only have, um, two copies, but if anybody wants to take a look at it, um, I've got it here, and, and they've done a really good job highlighting the work of our high school students and our honors society and the work that they do for CAPS. So I appreciate them focusing on that. Um, in talking about the Hunger Walk, I know that's a big event for our district always, we're going to be furthering that work and partnering with Lexington Christian Academy. That's a partnership that CAP has established. Um, they are going to start participating in the Hunger Walk in, in Fayette County, and they're looking to Rockcastle County as a model for what we've been doing. So I've had a couple of meetings with them, and they're going to be bringing some students into the county to start modeling what we're doing and working with CAP and working with Food Pantry. So we're really excited about that, and we're looking forward to seeing those students and our students working together to, to combat hunger and to look into tackle that hunger initiative. We know one in four of our Rockcastle County students are food insecure, so that's something that, that's near and dear to my heart, that I want to make sure that we're always keeping in the forefront of our decisions as we look at our students, so. Anybody have any questions for me?
Have you, have you had a chance to talk to Mr. Bussell about the board doing anything for our seniors?
Yes, yes, so he is looking to discuss that with his school counselors, and actually, he and Mr. Rupert and I are going to be talking about that tomorrow.
Okay.
Yep, so, and I told you I'd mentioned the cookout possibility, and that was, that was very well received.
That's great, uh, that's a great project, and of course, CAPS has been around here a long time, and to capitalize on the opportunity with them and to commend them.
Yeah.
And, and, um, I feel comfortable that we did do a good job, and it speaks well that Fayette County is going to link with Rockcastle County and see what's going on here with the Hunger Walk.
Yeah.
And, uh, CAP's link, but CAP, CAP is a tremendous partner, has every year.
They are, they are fantastic, and they really have turned to us to help guide, and they're looking at it, trying to expand that beyond Fayette County. And want to use us as a model program, so that speaks well to, to our entire school district. Anybody else have any questions?
All right. Okay, that's all I have, do we have any, any other comments, anybody got anything?
I would, I would just like to say something about, um, because over in Fayette, and I won't take that as a myth. The thirty-five dollars, forty-five dollars, and because I, I want, I don't know that everyone really understood what I was trying to say about thirty-five dollars. My, my whole point with that, some time ago, of course, is approved at the strategic planning meeting, that brand was, was a differentiation, and, and, uh, we'll look at it as, uh, not a bonus, but the increase for summer school. All those folks have had a bad time throughout the year, classified and certified, and, uh, I just wanted it to be somewhat equitable. And, and with it, um, I just wanted to point out, with the, with the decision, if you looked at a rank-one teacher, uh, versus. looked at a rank-one teacher, uh, versus their daily rate, for summer school, they're gonna lose seventy-eight cents an hour, and that, uh, food service, a food service person, a food maker, which they're entitled, I'm not saying that, but if you compare their raise of twenty-four dollars fifty-one cent, there's just wide discrepancy there in the food, and I just wanted to ensure that everyone understood that I was not against the classifieds, there was a difference there, a huge difference, there's still a huge difference, uh, I think the certified person probably got the short end of the stick, if you look at seventy-eight cent loss, and then, uh, I'm all for the classifieds, the increase that they got.
Uh, speaking of that, did we get enough staff? Ms. Jamie, have you got, uh, you got people that's willing, what about our bus drivers?
It'd be good.
And then lastly, Derek, appreciate your presentation, your enthusiasm at Broadhead, um, staying home to color, not supporting your brother.
Goal, right?
Great job, and, and I know that your enthusiasm there, you're very motivational to the staff, to the students, and family, and sounds like a lot of good things are happening in your project.
I would tell you, when I started, um, in his role, Mr. Derek told me, you can't spell B S without B E S.
Amen!
And there you go.
Something bothered me, he also said he would take the students' names, to see their names, that's wrong, cause he knows all of these people.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true, that's very true.
He needs to give himself a credit.
Mr. Derek knows the inside and out of Broadhead Elementary School, and, and he's, he's in a tremendous support.
So it is, you know, and I got intrinsic values there, too. I get, I get the, it's not my pay, it's not, it's just for, well, I get out of it a lot more than they probably get out of me, um, and so it makes it a little easier for me to do that, just because it does mean something to me, the place does.
It's unreal to see him, but she's grown in his, in his position, I can remember when he started, you know, how he's embraced it.
I don't know what I'd do without him.
Yeah, very much so.
And I really struggled, I really did, and I was even in a meeting with, uh, Ms. Carrie and maybe Ms. Jennifer one time, they, it, it was during COVID early, they're like, hey, you okay? And I wasn't, and I'm, and I'm still not, uh, fully, just because I just, I just like my kids, and I like, I just, I, I feed off of them, I like to talk in front of them, I like to hear myself talk, and I like to think that I'm making impacts every day, but, uh, yeah, this has been tough for me, it's just, even, even, even having your staff in the library, you know, they're, just being able to be in front of them, and, and letting them share, my, share my passion with them, I think has been a hardship on Broadhead, just because it's, it's hurt my leadership, and it really has, and, and just, and just the way, the same thing about my students, not having them in the gym every Monday, I have them all except kindergarten's on Mondays most days, or, you know, every, and I just like to rub off on them a little bit, and plus they get to hear what I, what I'm expecting and what's going on, and plus it just gives me that time to think, oh, you know, at least, they at least heard that, they at least are, I'm expecting that, my staff is expecting that, and this whole piece has just been a little tough on, on that, just because I just depended so much on my interactions, which is my interactions, so...
I was just telling Ms. Carrie, the growth that you've had in seventeen years is unreal. Uh, Savannah was in grade school when you first started, and if I'm not mistaken, you took a emergency certification position, is that right?
Well, I, I took a half position, we, we were, uh, special education, and it was a half position at Broadhead and a half position at Roundstone.
Yeah, and, uh, just the growth that she's made, any time here is, is great.
I do appreciate it, and I've had a lot of impacts, I've had a lot of people that have been really good to me, the Broadhead's been great to me, Rockcastle County's been outstanding to me, it's provided me with a lot of opportunities that I was successful